Is it recording, Rick?
It's recording on my end, but I don't know if we're live.
Yeah. I assume it is. All right. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Notice of this meeting has been posted on the Montclair Township webpage. It's been published in the Star Ledger and in the Montclair Times and it's been posted on the bulletin board inside the municipal building and outside on the doors at the entrance to the municipal building. This meeting is being conducted remotely and participants can follow the meeting using the Cisco Webex application link. We have a link to the meeting on the agenda that's posted on the webpage. You can also follow on the Montclair Township YouTube channel or on TV 34. I'd like to introduce this this evening's meeting, the Township's Assistant Planner, Tony Sibilia, who will be, he's in training as the Secretary of the Meeting and I am going to give him the host, ability to run this meeting and hosting this meeting as well as calling the role. So Tommy, if you want to call the role.
All right, we'll go through the role now. Mr. Church. Mr. McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Harrison.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Caulfield.
Here.
And Mr. Viera. Is not here.
Didn't hear my name come up.
Sorry, Mr. Fleischer.
Here.
All right.
Okay, so we don't have any minutes, correct?
No.
We, so we have the resolution for Bank of America on Valley Road. I do not have any changes to the resolution. Does anyone else have any changes?
Move approval of the resolution as submitted.
There's second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions?
Abstain.
And next we have the continuation of the public hearing for Seventeen Wachung Plaza LLC for property at Seventeen Wachung Plaza. Is everyone present and ready to go? We approve the use variance, remain site plan approval and several C variances.
Tommy, if you can make Alan Tremblak a panelist as well as Paul Seonis.
All right, I've made both of them panelists.
Mr. Tremblak, please, ready to proceed?
I, I hope so. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Janice, we also need, in addition to Paul Seonis, Bob Silver and Elizabeth Dolan should also be
Okay.
let into the meeting.
Okay, yeah. Tommy, it's Bravitas, Robert Silver, that's his name, I believe. There you go.
Okay. There are a couple Robert Silvers added, both.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin or continue this hearing, I also have the last item on your agenda tonight, which coincidentally involves the other former Chase Bank building in town at 475 Bloomfield Avenue. I'd like to request that that application be carried to the Board's next meeting. I think it's it's unlikely the Board would get to it, and if it does, it would be very late and I have, I'm going to lose a witness. So if we could have that carried to the January meeting or the Board's next available meeting, I would appreciate that and also obviously request that no further notice be required.
I have to reduce myself on that, so others are going to have to carry the ball with making the announcement and whatever.
Janice, what about scheduling? When would you put that on?
That's, Tommy, you have the agendas for January. Would it be, we have residentials on for the first meeting of January, right? Perhaps this should be the second meeting in January.
The first meeting has fewer applications on it right now, so.
All right, then put it on the first meeting in January.
Okay.
So what's the date of that?
Tommy, what's that meeting date?
January 12, sorry.
Okay, so there's a request to carry the application to January 12, 2027, 30 p.m. Will be a remote meeting. The login information will be on the township website. And there's, and there will be no further notice required if someone wants to make a motion to that effect. Some. Who is that? And we have a second?
Second, second.
I don't know if you heard Fleischer or McCullough, so you got both of us. Okay, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
All right, Alan, that's off till January 12, 2022, 7:30 p.m. No further notice.
Thank you very much. So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, as you already noted, this is a continuation of the hearing on the site plan application with variances for the former Chase Bank building at Seventeen Wachung Plaza. As you also noted, the conclusion of the November meeting, the Board voted to approve the D variance we requested in order to, in order to permit office space on the first floor of this building. The Board also requested that we give some thought and reconsideration to a revised, a reconfigured site plan for the parking area in the rear of the building. And we have done that. Paul Seonis submitted revised site plans about two weeks ago and he will review those plans for the Board this evening. And just as a brief reminder regarding the three variances that we're seeking, we have the parking deficiency variance. We have a variance for parking setbacks for the rear parking area, which has never been set back four feet from property lines and we're dramatically improving that condition. However, we still need relief from the setback requirement. And then the last variance is a sign variance to permit the applicant to install a sign with the name of the building, namely the national, in the original sign band for this historic building, which is located at the very top of the building. Those are the three variances. One other sort of housekeeping item that I wanted to mention before I call Mr. Seonis. There's another change to this application since the last meeting. The Board will recall when we presented this at the last meeting that in addition to the 10 permit parking spaces that the applicant has secured in the municipal parking lot, the applicant also had planned to provide an additional five off-site parking spaces in the rear of property located at 260 Park Street. However, due to complications with utilizing that property to provide parking for this application, which were mentioned in Janice Tally's December 8th Planning Memorandum, we're no longer able to provide those parking spaces at 260 Park Street. So by eliminating those five spaces, it increases the parking deficiency variance by five spaces. We had a deficiency of nine spaces. We're also reducing a space in the rear, as you'll hear in a minute, so that we now have a deficiency of, of 15 spaces. So, and because of that, I planted, after Mr. Seonis discusses the revised plan, I plan to recall Elizabeth Dolan, our traffic engineer, to provide some supplemental testimony in light of the change in the parking that I just described. So, having said that, I'd like to recall Paul Seonis.
Okay.
Mr. Seonis, you were sworn in at the November hearing. You're still under oath. Do you understand that?
Mr. Seonis is muted. You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. I understand that, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you.
All right. Paul, you submitted a revised site plan about two weeks ago. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, and as is your practice, did you also prepare a, an updated or revised PowerPoint to assist you in presenting the plan revisions to the Board this evening?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Okay, and Janice, can we pull that up? Can we have this marked as the next exhibit?
Yeah, I think we're up to A2.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Paul, would you discuss Exhibit A2 and explain the plan revisions for the Board?
Okay, there are 12, 12 slides, all dated December 15, 2021. That will explain the plan revisions. Next slide, please, Janice or Tommy. So on November 17th, at the last meeting, we, we showed this proposal, 11 parking stalls with one ADA or handicap parking space plus six tandem parking spaces. And the ADA or the handicap space was accessed from the existing Fairfield Street curb cut. This is where it had been historically and, and we kept it there at the time. We also showed a wood fence trash enclosure and two dual electric vehicle chargers. Next slide, please. We, we listened to the comments from the Board and, and members of the public and revised the site plan proposal. This is dated today's date. And this is the, what has been submitted to the zoning board and this PowerPoint. The drawing is colored for better visibility and the drawing is also enlarged on this slide, also for better visibility to explain the changes. So instead of 11 parking stalls, now we're proposing, excuse me, 10 parking stalls, still with one ADA or handicap space and eight tandem stalls, excuse me. The ADA stall, which is shown with the handicap logo on the stall in the center of that parking area, is now accessed from the driveway that leads to the Wachung Plaza Municipal Parking Lot. And directly to the south of that is a striped access aisle that will provide access to the base of the existing ADA ramp at the back of the existing building. And that striped access aisle provides access from the existing Wachung Plaza Municipal Parking Lot driveway to the base of that ramp. That striped access aisle is eight feet wide next to the barrier-free space, the ADA space, then it goes down to 5.25 feet next to the trash and recycling enclosure. And then it widens back to eight feet at the base of the barrier-free ramp. In addition to this change to the parking lot layout, there is now a, a designed trash enclosure next to the landscaped area. So in the center of this parking area, there's a nine, excuse me, 9.6 feet by 9.6 foot trash and recycling enclosure to the right of it or to the west of it. On this plan is a landscaped area. There's a five-foot wide permeable paver walkway. There's a bench within that walkway or a little plaza. And then there's a three-foot landscaped area separating that paver area from parking stall number nine, which is directly to the bottom of, of this trash enclosure and plaza area and, or directly to the north of it. The, we're still proposing two dual EV or electric vehicle chargers. I've circled both of those in red based on where we're showing them. They could be accessed by three vehicles, you know, from the three different parking spaces each. Previously, we showed plantings on the public right-of-way. In other words, we showed plantings encroaching into the Fairfield Street public sidewalk. Previously, that was asphalt paving that the bank had installed. We're now calling for that asphalt paving to be removed, replaced with concrete to match the existing concrete sidewalk. And then we're placing a four-foot wide planting strip just to the north of the public sidewalk with evergreen plantings to screen the side view of the parked vehicles. In addition to those evergreens, we're proposing small flowering trees within that planting strip. The, we're also proposing a, so there are two small flowering trees and then there's a third flowering tree to the right or to the west side of that trash and recycling enclosure. Additionally, there's an existing utility pole on this property towards the bottom of the parking area or towards the north side of that parking area. That utility pole has to remain, but we will be surrounding that with new planting. So evergreen planting that's shown in dark green. It's a low evergreen ground cover. And with three deciduous shrubs directly to the north of it. And then finally, a parking stall number six, which is the bottom left or the northeast corner of this parking lot, that is now being labeled as a client drop-off only parking stall. So we're calling for that to have 12-inch painted letters with the words "client drop-off only." Those are the changes we've made to this site plan. If we go to the next slide, please.
Paul, before you do that, I just had a couple of quick follow-up questions. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the original plan contemplated, I'll call it driveway or access from Fairfield Street, not through the parking lot, but a separate basically driveway, similar to what exists today. That's been eliminated in the revised plan, correct?
Right, that's been eliminated. That, that driveway apron and curb cut is proposed to be eliminated. We're continuing the brick pavers between the public concrete sidewalk and the public street curb along Fairfield Street. And then instead of one street tree or shade tree, we're indicating that two shade trees in consultation with the Township Arbors would be planted between the public sidewalk and Fairfield Street in what's known as the tree lawn areas, the area between the public sidewalk and the curb.
Okay, and if I recall, the prior plan also contemplated, I guess, the continuation of some encroachments into the public right-of-way that, again, apparently have existed for quite some time. Am I correct that this revised plan eliminates those encroachments? So there's no longer any encroachment of anything on this property into the public right-of-way?
That, that, well, that is correct, except for at the top right of the subject property where there's a, the property line is on a radius. The corner of the existing building where the cursor is, is actually in the public right-of-way and it has been since 1924. And then that planting strip just to the top left of that corner of the building is also in the public right-of-way and that, that will remain. And to my understanding, that, those have existed since 1924.
But all of the encroachments to the rear, particularly around the parking area adjacent to Fairfield Street, have been eliminated as a result of this plan, correct?
That, that's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Go on.
Next, next slide, please. Slide four. As I stated, now there is a designed trash and recycling enclosure and there are two, two slides showing this. The applicant has hired a gentleman named Charlie Spademan, who's a metal worker and artist, to design the trash and recycling enclosure. Previously, the trash and recycling enclosure was to be a wood, a board-on-board fence with a corrugated metal roof. Now this is looking at elements from this bank and other bank projects that the applicant has worked on. So this is a 9.6 feet by 9.6 feet in footprint trash and recycling enclosure. It has a gable-shaped roof. And the image on the right is the side that faces the driveway entrance to the Wachung Plaza parking lot. These are two, two gates that are constructed of Corten steel with cutouts in the Corten steel. The gable roof will have, will be a metal roof with a vertigrate patina in it. But the other wall surfaces are all to be constructed out of Corten steel with cutouts. And then in the center of three sides of this, so in that image on the left, that's the north, the west side, which faces the back of the building, and the south elevation, which faces Fairfield Street, the center port, center part is a design with bank safe, safe deposit doors arranged as artwork in the center of those walls. And if we go to the next slide, please, you'll see this in color. So this is a color iteration designed by Spademan. Shows the bank safety deposit box doors on three facades of this trash enclosure. The main walls are Corten steel that have cutouts for designing. See the like branching pattern designed within those walls. And then, as I said, there'll be a metal roof and there's a, an image of the color, the green of the metal roof. Okay, next slide, please. The landscaping revised a little bit to reflect the revision of the site plan. And I just wanted to show the different plants that are used. Originally, on, on this plan, we showed the three small trees to be Yoshino cherries. However, they're not native to New Jersey. We prefer not to use them. So the alternate would be flowering dogwood, which the same height, similar characteristics to the Yoshino cherry, except different time of flower. Same size, but, but it's a native plant. The three shrubs surrounding the utility pole will be this red osier dogwood, which have bright red twigs in the winter. We're still using the shamrock inkberry in the bottom part of the slide to screen off the side view of the parked vehicles from Fairfield Street. And then the other four plants that are also native, native to New Jersey will be used on the site. Next slide, please. Another revision, or, or not revision, but clarification is the window display. As you recall, one slide back, please. Slide, thank you. So there are four, four large windows on the west-facing facade of, of this building. And as I stated last time, these windows are high above the sidewalk level. They're over five feet from the sidewalk level to the base of these windows. The windows are very tall. They're, they're a little over eight feet in height. And each one will have a different display. And the, and the first one on the left or the north will be the building history and finds. The second one will be feeding tools. Third one, education and books, working in conjunction with Wachung booksellers. And then the fourth will be children's artwork. So if we go to the next slide, please. So again, these are large windows on this facade of the building. They're, they're about eight feet tall. They're wide. So the windows one and four, which is the northernmost and southernmost window on that facade, have a the glass display area will be approximately four foot two inches wide by one foot 11 inches or almost two feet height of glass area. So it's those lower two grids or the, the bottom two rows of muntens with the grids in the windows. That will be the win, where the window display is. And then the two center windows, windows labeled two and three, they're, they're narrower. So the glass area was two foot 10 inches by the same one foot 11 or almost two foot high. So that's where the, the window display will be in these two lowest horizontal grids within these four windows. So if we turn to the next slide, please. So the applicant, Mr. Silver, again, besides the trash and recycling enclosure, part of that slide is cut off. Can that be slid down a little? Thank you. So besides the new trash and recycling enclosure, Mr. Silver has worked with Mr. Spademan to design these window displays. And this in particular is window number one, which is the building history and finds. And the glass, he'll be creating glass boxes inside of those lower two horizontal muntens of those four windows. There'll be glass on all four sides of these window displays. The glass will be repurposed from the Wilson Building, which is one of the projects we did with Mr. Silver at 307 Bloomfield Avenue in Caldwell, which is a repurposed bank project. And this will be illuminated by LED lighting from above. So you could see the top left is the daytime view. The top right is the nighttime view, not much different. And then the bottom is a blow-up of the safety deposit box doors that will be used within this window display as part of the building history and finds. Next slide, please. And then this would begin Betsy Dolan's testimony. The next three slides. So I'll, I'll answer any questions on the site plan revisions.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
I, I do, but I also, the, the package I got also included what appeared to be an alternate one for the site plan. Is that off the table? I don't, I didn't understand that. I just want to understand what it is.
Okay, we, we looked at an alternate that would provide ADA access both from the Fairfield Street public sidewalk and from the driveway that leads to the Wachung Plaza parking lot. And so the alternate showed access to the base of the ramp, both from the public sidewalk and from the driveway. And the alternate just shows that, you know, we, we looked at that, we tried it, we lose one additional parking spaces. So, so we'd have nine parking spaces with that alternate as compared to the plan that's being shown tonight, which has the 10 parking spaces.
And do you have a preference, just so I understand what your preference might be?
I'll defer to the applicant on, on that question.
Okay.
I, I can answer that, Mr. Fleischer. The applicant has a strong preference for the plan that Paul discussed. You know, the alternate was provided there, you know, a lot of time was spent on various reconfigurations and plans that, I guess, maybe was the second best one, but it is, you know, the applicant, as I said, has a very strong preference for the the plan with the 10 spaces that Paul discussed earlier.
Okay, that, I just was seeking clarification on that. Just another question is, I understand the essence of the artwork, which is the trash enclosure. I, I, I understand the efforts a, as a piece of sculpture and a piece of art. But it gets awfully tall and awfully hot. But it gets awfully tall and awfully high. And I'm wondering why the gates and the beautiful facade couldn't exist with essentially a flat roof to lower the presence of this structure, which has actually gotten quite high. And it it can't simply be an issue of runoff or anything. That's not an issue. So I I I think I greatly appreciate the sense and the beauty of the of the enclosure. I'm not sure it needs a big uh gabled roof over it. Um, and I think it it puts it gives it too much presence within the area and and within the back, and I'm not sure it's needed. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on that, Mr. Sanders.
I I well, we did not design this. Um, and again, the applicant worked directly with the artist to design this. Um, can can we defer to the applicant to for his thoughts on this?
I I'd be I'd be happy to hear from anybody. I I just my my sense is when I read the dimensions and everything else, and I think I looked at it pretty carefully, it gets up much higher than it needs to go up.
Mr. Fleischer, yeah.
Yeah, let me just finish. It's a change in material. Of course, it appears to be a uh a copper roof or a copper looking roof. Um, I won't get into the issues of Corten, which almost invariably always run and do still shed what I call rust from it, though I like it as a beautiful textural material, but it does do those things. But I I I'm I'm just wondering about why the roof is needed to make its presence even bigger than it already is. And when all is said and done, it's still primarily there for functional need. So, Mr. Silver, I have I I would like to hear your thoughts on it.
Sure. Um, and and I I appreciate your comments, Mr. Fleischer. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So um one is is that I've worked with Charlie Spademan for years. He's a fine artist and I'm I'm really thrilled to have a sculpture as a trash enclosure. I think it'd be the first one in Montclair. Um, I think the the original design intent was to mimic the gable that is on the south end of the building, and and that was kind of our design intent. I have no problem of uh flattening this roof uh and making it shed with a similar material. Uh, still have the copper uh patinaed look. We can still have the four sides and we can soften the height of it. I think that's a good suggestion. On the Corten steel, um, uh Charlie has perfected a way of um sealing that so we don't have that rust runoff that will hit my driveway. Uh, I brought that off out that also, and I know there's a lot of buildings around the world that's created a big problem, and I think he has solved that.
Okay, well, be your maintenance issue if he hasn't.
What's that, Mr. Fleischer?
It would be your maintenance issue if he hasn't solved the runoff.
Uh, it it becomes his maintenance issue. That's exactly.
Okay. Um, in any case, I I I think I think it is a beautiful piece of work, primarily in its gates and its sides, that it doesn't need the added elevation. And I would suggest to my fellow board members that it it would be beneficial to uh eliminate the gable. Um, and but the rest of it looks fine to me, so I have no problem with that. And I I have the clarification on the uh on which plan you prefer. I have no uh problem with that as well. I did have one small question about, can we go to the site plan? I just wanted to understand the gate that I saw near the back.
Um, so at the bottom right of stall number ten?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so so we're screening the air conditioning units, which are mounted on the ground. There are uh four air conditioning units shown there in the bottom right of the um behind the building. And we're screening them with a six foot high board on board wood fence with a gate to have access uh to those air conditioning units.
Okay, and just and one other clarification. Client drop off only. I'm not sure I understand that, since we're already shy on parking spaces. Uh, the 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 drive itself in the lot is quite wide. You have a fair amount of sidewalk space, which is sort of why I asked about the other plan, that someone can be dropped off at the curb and still have easy access to the accessible parking. And given the fact that we're losing a space, one can say that this is a ten space, but at another level, you're saying it's not really a parking space. So I didn't quite understand the explanation. You have the ability to drop off, what I would say at least off the street, or alternatively, you have the ability to drop off on the street. Um, and that was your alternate plan, where you drop, where you essentially had handicap access or or potential drop off along the along Fairfield, which is now in this plan, doesn't exist. And I just want your thoughts on it, because we've lost more parking spaces. The the variance is greater than originally projected. And and I'll speak to the the parking consultant when we when we speak, when we get to that. Um, but to to actually lose a space and and have it strike differently as if, in theory, you're not allowed to park there, really takes away a space. You don't really have ten spaces. You really have nine spaces, similar to the other uh plan. If you say you're not allowed to park there, you're only allowed to sort of stop. And why would someone pull into that space in order to drop someone off versus just stopping in front of the space and letting the person walk out of the car and go into the building? So I didn't really, I wasn't sure I felt comfortable with losing yet another space at the site for something that is now called drop off only.
Alright, I I agree with your comments, Mr. Fleischer. Again, I I would defer to the applicant um to discuss if he feels strongly about the client drop off parking stall.
I'm not sure Mr. Silver's aware that we're waiting for his response.
I I don't see him out there, Mr. Fleischer. I I think we should probably wait, although my
Mr. Mr. Silver's an attendee. Um, To- To- Tommy, can you make him a panelist?
He's a panelist now.
Yeah, Bob, we you need to turn your microphone on, because we can't hear you and we can't see you.
I think he's connecting now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Silver, see if you can turn your video on also.
We there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Silver, you're still under oath.
My laptop died on me. I apologize. Um, and the question, uh, what was the question? I'm sorry.
Question is, given the fact that we've even lost more parking spaces by virtue of the inability to make the the deal, I I don't see a real value in the client drop in in a space that's going to be striped as client drop off only when you're so desperate for parking spaces and so far below the requirement. And there's ample opportunity, both in the driveway exiting the uh Watchon Plaza lot, as well as both on Fairfield Street and on the corner of of uh Watchon Plaza, that you should, people should be able to get dropped off either directly in front of the building or on Fairfield Street and not lose yet another space dedicated and marked as if only for client drop off. That was the question.
I I I I'm quite agreeable tonight. I couldn't agree with you more. Um, I would like to recapture that spot. I think there's plenty of opportunity for clients to have a safe access without having that. And I'd love to recapture that for employee parking.
Okay, so we we could agree on two things with regard to my questions. One is is to perhaps flatten the roof over the uh trash area, and the other is to eliminate the marking of uh for drop off only. And I and and I don't know what other, what my colleagues may say, but in my discussion, at least, that's what you've agreed to.
I I'm a hundred percent in agreement with both of your comments.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions, Mr. Harris.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions.
Okay, and Mr. Sullivan, the the board members who can't vote on it, can they still ask questions of the applicant and witnesses?
Yes, they can.
Okay. Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
No questions at the moment.
Okay, Mr. Simon, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Harris, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Um, Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
I have one question. Um, uh, I I think I'm gonna add, I think my question will go to the parking person. But I I I was, I guess I was the one that talked about the client drop off zone um back in that time, where I think, you know, where I think most of the people will be dropping off and not necessarily going in there. And I know that there are places on Watchon and Fairfield that they can do that. But when you sit there and waiting for your kid, I think a percentage of the people will be sitting in that parking lot waiting for them to come out. Um, I'm perfectly fine with that, having a designated, you know, parking thing for um for clients. But I think that that's where parents will be for pickup. If you don't mind, I think I would like maybe like a sign that says no idling in that parking lot if possible. Um, I know you had some signs put up in that area, but I'll wait for my questions with the uh parking um person. Thank you.
I don't have any questions of this witness. Uh, Mr. Fleischer covered my concerns. Mr. Tremblak, do you want to call your next witness?
Um, I I will, Mr. Chairman. Um, did you want to check to see if there's any public questions?
I think I think what I'm gonna have the public go at the end. It's just it's been so hard with the muting and unmuting that
Sure.
I think that, and I sus- and since a lot of this related to the parking, I suspect there'll be overlap.
Sure, no problem. My uh next witness, again, I'm recalling uh Elizabeth Dolan.
Ms. Dolan, are you present?
You have to unmute yourself. Tommy, can you unmute her?
No, I think I figured it out. There was a couple of options. You can hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, we can. And just, you you understand you're still under oath?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Dolan, um, at the last meeting, you testified regarding the availability of public parking spaces based upon the parking counts you did. Um, and provided an opinion that you believe there was a sufficient number of part, public spaces available, combined with the spaces the applicant had onsite or had obtained in the municipal lot, in order to justify or support a parking deficiency variance, which at the time was nine spaces. Is that fair to, fair summary of your opinion?
That's a fair summary of of the uh of the opinion and the testimony from the last meeting.
Okay, so now, um, as a result of the revisions to the rear parking lot, uh, which results in eliminating one space from what was previously proposed and the loss of the five offsite spaces, um, am I correct in that the parking deficiency variance is now increased to fifteen spaces from nine?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so my question then would be, in your professional opinion, um, whether um the um parking var- parking variance for, whether deficiency variance for the fifteen spaces um can be justified and actually whether there's available parking to support this project um with the increased parking deficiency of fifteen spaces. Sorry if I didn't word that very articulately, but I think you understand the question, hopefully.
Yes, I do. Um, the uh testimony from the last meeting regarding the parking variance um concluded that there's ample parking within the metered and and um available public park in proximate to the property. Um, the applicant has obtained the ten spaces at the um at the uh Watchon train station at the lot, in addition to the ten spaces that we just discussed on the property, none of which will be now designated for pickup drop off. So there's a provision of twenty specific spaces allocated for this use, and that exceeds the anticipated um employee demand of nineteen. So we've got a little buffer of one. But uh certainly, the all of the parking counts that we performed indicate that there's ample parking within reasonable walking distance of the site to accommodate more than fifteen. Um, in fact, the um the the next slide, if you can go to the next slide, summarizes um available metered spots, uh thirty eight, available transit spots, seventy two on average. And I believe at a minimum, we found at least twenty one metered spaces available at any given time during the extensive parking studies that we performed. So um we're totally accommodating our anticipated employee demand. We've got plenty of parking for those folks. And then otherwise, the site is going to function like most of the other businesses at Watchon Plaza um that don't have any parking. So we're fully accommodating our employee parking. And even with this loss of six spaces from the uh discussion last month, my conclusions remain the same, that the variance can be granted without any negative impact, and there's certainly sufficient parking to accommodate uh the fifteen deficient um spaces.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
I I just want to clarify, what do you define as within reasonable wa- a walking distance?
Oh, sure, yes. That that's a good question. We we've um looked at the spaces just sort of around the block in that uh the Fairfield lot and the street spaces at Watchon Plaza. And we had separately counted the um transit spaces. So it's just sort of around the block of the subject property.
And 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 you found the time when there were twenty one open spaces?
That was a minimum. That was a minimum. And and we had visited the site several times um from August through October um throughout the course of the day, midday, later in the afternoon. Um, so various times that we sampled, we found that there was ample parking. As as this slide shows, an average of thirty eight spaces available. Um, but at a minimum, we had at least twenty one.
Okay, that's, that isn't my personal experience, but if you have the counts, I have to, I'll accept that as as a as a circumstance that you've determined. I I seriously question the number, though I, that doesn't mean I wouldn't be in favor of the application, but I seriously question the number of so-called available spots in the lot. So I'll leave it at that.
But we 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 sampled it for hours at a time through many, many different days. But I understand uh parking is always at a premium.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Dolan, I was just wondering, um, now you've indicated uh that there's sufficient parking available. I'm wondering if your study uh showed what the circumstances are when uh you have uh peak commuter times. Uh, so when uh passengers are being dropped off, uh what I mean, what about the traffic patterns uh early in the morning and then again in the evening? And how how would that affect uh the ability of people to access parking uh uses facility?
I I think that um, you know, a lot of the transit activity has has changed dramatically in the past two years, which is why Mr. Silver was able to obtain spaces in that in that lot, uh because the demand isn't where it used to be. And at the last meeting, we talked about And at the last meeting, we talked about um New Jersey Transit's uh surveys. Um, and about a lot of people never going back to offices or only going back to offices a few days a week. So the demand is low and anytime we've been out there. It that parking lot used to be uh jammed full of people and at the same time, a lot more pickup drop off. So I think a lot of that had has subsided. And I don't know that we're going to see the the peak um transit activity. Um, come back for several years if it ever does come back because we've all learned to work a little bit differently. So. While that's a real life and ongoing situation, I don't think it's anywhere as busy as it had been pre-COVID.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Uh, Mr. Simon, do you have any questions?
Questions.
Um, Ms. Harris, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Um, Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
Do, Chair, thank you. Um, Ms. Dolan. Do we know what the percentage of people that would be using or going here that would be driving their own cars?
I I don't know that there's been any um estimate of that, and that would be for the operators of the of the uh office. I don't know. I would imagine that the majority would be vehicular trips, but I don't I don't have any data on that.
Okay, um, all right, um. Chair, is Mr. Silver able to speak to uh some of these questions that I might have?
I certainly, I certainly.
I I worry. I I do we know what the percentage of people that would be driving to and parking there and using this facility at all?
Uh, it it we went with the peak client hours, um and we just assumed. That they would all be driving. Um, I think it will be less than that. So on a weekday, if you go to the slide set uh twelve. You'll see that on average per hour, there are thirteen clients seen. And then from eleven thirty to three P M, on average, there's sixteen clients seen. And from three to eight P M, there's eighteen clients seen. So I we assume that they're all will be driving and that's what we based um availability. Uh, of of parking requirements on, but I I I would think that a lot of these folks will not be parking. They'll be dropping off. Or I think they'll be walking, biking, or or other modes of transportation. So it'll be less than these average numbers.
Got you. Um, are you desperate for parking in in that sense? And if you are desperate for parking, since it might be a more of a drop off clientele. What where would that desperation be? Would it be the work staff that's there or can you can you? Paint a picture for me or just tell me about that aspect of it?
I I I'm not sure what your desperation question is.
Okay, but you the I think I think what I'm I'm getting to in this situation is that there's a code that says you have to have a certain amount of spots. And that you need to fulfill those spots, but I don't necessarily think that this business is going to actually meet need to meet those spots because I think. I feel like most of your clients will be. Dropped off in that sense. I mean, it's not like a gym where someone's gonna drive their car and park their car and then use the facilities. I I feel like it's gonna be more of a drop off clientele. Do you do you see that too or no?
So so what what we really wanted to do is be able to park the consultants. And then treat the clients like any other business in Wachung Plaza. Uh, where there is plenty of municipal and transit parking available for those clients. So. Um, I I think you have to look at it um like any other business in the plaza, any retail restaurant. Uh, where you're dining, shopping, it's the uh we should treat these clients the same way and they'll be finding public parking spots.
Yeah, and I I don't think there's a I I think there's plenty of parking there. I'm I'm not, I mean, in the sense that for what this is going to be.
Absolutely.
Uh, Ms. Dolan, um, one last question, if you don't mind me. I mean, this is a very fragile parking nightmare aspect of it. The other day, I. Got out just around the time when schools were getting out and crossing over from Wachung Plaza across Wachung Avenue. It was kind of sketchy or like it was hairy as as it is. Do you feel that maybe this increase would have, we we do we sense that this business might add a little bit more to that kind of?
But that's that's a that's a fair question. Um, I I don't see the traffic associated with this use as being significant, and and that does have a definition. Um, the State Highway Access Management Code defines significant as a hundred um trips in one hour, and we're going to be well below that. Um, there's been historic activity associated with with the uh building, the bank onsite. Um, and so while certainly there will be uh more activity maybe than the bank. Uh, we're not looking at anything that would be creating a negative impact. Um, because we're not at that that high a level. And the Institute of Transportation Engineers similarly. Indicates that at a hundred uh vehicles or more in an hour, a hundred trips in an hour, yeah, you know, you may be. Uh, creating a situation that warrants mitigation. Uh, I don't see us as generating anything close to that. The employees are gonna generally come in the morning and stay. Leave in the evening and then you're gonna have some pickup drop off activity. And based on the numbers. Mr. Silver just provided that that's gonna be maybe, you know, on the order of eighteen in an hour. Um, so it's low what we consider significant.
Just Paul Phil, I I would I would um premise and I don't I I. Betsy might disagree with me. I would say that the number of trips per hour will be less than what Chase had. Uh, in the in its previous incarnation at seventeen Wachung Plaza.
I agree, and you know, having clients parked technically in that back area. When they come out, they're not gonna go through Wachung Plaza, which is and then make a left on Wachung, which is kind of a nightmare just to come out, go left on Fairfield and go up that way would be the, you know. And the 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 clients are gonna figure that out as they work on it, but.
They're gonna be regular users, so they're gonna know.
Exactly, yeah, and they're gonna figure it out. Um, I mean, and this is what it is. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I I just have a couple of questions and I it's more philosophical was. Uh, my my biggest issue is with the weekend parking where and based on the numbers on the slide. Uh, they're anticipating eleven clients per hour from eight to noon. Um, and you do not do any studies on weekend parking availability. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you know, I just my observation, which is pretty much every weekend, I'm either looking for parking or. Driving through Wachung Plaza is that. There are a very few parking spaces available and there are a lot of cars sitting waiting for someone to pull out to before they. Waiting for a space to free up. Um, so I guess, um. I have a concern during that time period. I guess my question to you is, how do you address that, given that you did not do a study then? Um, of the availability of parking. I I mean, let let me let me back up a step. I think the commuter parking is irrelevant. You can't park there without a hang tag. They're they're issued on a monthly basis and. The town has, you know, at least in the years when um I was parking in in the train station lot was fairly diligent about enforcing and making sure people had their permits. So. I, you know, I I don't view those spaces as being available. The town decided they could allocate ten space, ten permit spaces to you and. I think that's a given as to where we are. It's the metered spaces and I guess. Without having done a study on Saturday mornings, you know, I think that the limited number of clients coming Saturday midday, even though parking's. Tight, then I I'm not all that concerned with five clients coming at that point. Um. But I I am concerned about the weekend parking and. Without your having done a study of available parking spaces, how do we make a conclusion that that's not gonna? Exacerbate what I already perceive as being a a problem time.
Sure, we we focused on the the weekday because that was the higher generating time period associated with the proposed use. I don't know that we're also going to have the same employee load for the weekends. Uh, Mr. Silver may be able to touch on that. Um, I know at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the Saturday differences versus weekday. Um, and there was also some conversation about um how some of the Wachung lot um is underutilized and may ultimately go to more um metered parking. I don't know the situation. Um, specifically or what will happen with that. That I know was just discussed in general at the last meeting in November.
Mr. Harrison, on Saturdays, um. And Sun- well, on Sundays, it's even lower. There's half the number of consultants that are working. And pretty much afternoon, uh, you know, twelve noon, um, it's pretty much their day is over. Um, so, um, yes, I I understand your concern, but it's, you know, half the normal load of the weekday. And then it's over at noon.
Okay, but the the numbers you have from eight A M. To noon are indicate eleven clients are seen per hour, and I assume each of those clients has. A staff member that they're coming to see, so it's.
It it that that is correct, but we have parked the staff members, so. Um, that's been taken care of in the rear lot.
Staff, you're clearly. Okay, on weekday, weekends, there's no issue with that. It's the clients and the people driving the clients um that.
It's on average eleven an hour, so um, yes, we didn't do counts, but I I don't think that's gonna tip over the plaza.
And I would also think that if we've got only ten or eleven staff on Saturday, they're the ones that could use the transit spaces, leaving the spaces. Uh, next to the building for pickup drop off.
I think that might be a good solution that uh or at least leave the rear of the stack spaces available might. Alleviate my concern.
Right.
Okay, um, are there, um. We're gonna open it up to members of the public. If you have questions, uh, either from Ms. Dolan or Mr. Silver or Mr. Sionis, this is your opportunity. Um, if you have questions, then Alan, do you have any other witnesses?
Uh, no, I don't, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and and if you have, if there's, if you have any comments or testimony or anything you want to say about. The application, this is your opportunity either for questions or testimony concerning the application. So. We're gonna open up all the microphones and if you have something to say, speak up.
Um, Janice, are you able to see the attendee list? I'm not sure that I. Properly unmuted everybody. Janice?
I'm sorry. Yeah, if you you look at the attendee list, you click the box to select all.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you click unmute.
Okay, there we go. I got it. Thank you.
So are there any members of the public who have either questions or comments about the application? This is your opportunity. Last chance, if you have any comments. Hey, Mr. Trimbleback, do you want to sum up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, uh, board members for your time and hearing this application. Um, again, the relief we're we're here for tonight is site plan approval. And the three variances, in addition to parking deficiency, which I'm gonna spend some time discussing. Um, the other two variances are to uh allow a sign uh at the top of the uh front of the building, which is basically. Part of the historic um restoration of this building, because that's where the original site was. Uh, when the building was constructed in nineteen twenty four and the front facade is being dramatically uh. Restored to what it looked like a hundred years ago and um, you know, the sign would 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 go where the building, where it was when the building was constructed. So. Um, and as far as the rear yard setback, uh, the the parking area setback. Uh, I think we all know that that parking area back there has had numerous non-conformities. Um, including non-conforming parking area setbacks. While we're we're continuing uh. With the, you know, non-conforming setback, we've reduced the uh the setback and also at the same time eliminated. A variety of other non-conformities, encroachments into the public right away and all the other things that have been mentioned. So. Um, those are the the two variants we're seeking in addition to parking. Before I talk about parking, I just wanted to begin by just take a few minutes to talk about. Um, the applicant here. I I I've been very fortunate to have represented. Mr. Silver and the Bravitas Group for approximately fifteen years. I've been involved either directly or indirectly with all of his projects and land use applications, both in Montclair and other towns. Um, I think it's clear from anyone who knows Bob Silver is he's a quality person. And his projects are quality projects. He's has a proven track record of repurposing old bank buildings in Montclair, four ninety one Bloomfield Avenue, as well as other towns. He's a great client to represent. He always goes out of his way to do the right thing without being prodded to do the right thing. Um, his projects are well thought out, they're well designed. Um, and um. As I said, he he goes out of his way to do the right things, especially when we're dealing with projects in Montclair because. This has been Bob's town, his hometown for the past thirty years or so. Um, and there's no better example of what Bob Silver does than than what you've seen tonight regarding the trash enclosure. Um, the last meeting, some comments were made or concerns about perhaps improving the look of the uh. Of the trash enclosure, even though what was presented fully complied, I think, with the site plan ordinance. So Bob was asked to make some design changes and, well, he's done that and a lot more. He's uh gone so far as to basically. Create a piece of artwork. For the community, along with a small outdoor seating area. I mean, who does that? Um, you know, I I don't know of any of of anyone else who who does. That's just an example of, you know, the quality of this applicant. Um, now, um, regarding parking, um, I'd first also say, um. You know, that one of the key reasons I think that all the Bravitas uh projects are successful in addition to the design. And everything else and the quality that they present is the parking. Um, Bob's Bravitas projects always have adequate parking. Um, not just to comply with zoning requirements, but adequate parking to meet the needs of his tenants. If he doesn't have enough parking on site, he goes out and gets it, and that's what he did. For the P N C Bank conversion on four ninety one Bloomfield Avenue. And 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 he did it with the his two bank buildings down the road in Caldwell. Um, and he gets the parking not because he has to in order to comply with zoning, but he gets the parking in order to make sure he has a successful project. You know, as a business person investing significant amounts of money in improving um. Older outdated buildings such as this. Um, there's no doubt in my mind that if this project didn't have adequate parking, Bob Silver would never have bought it and he would never have committed to invest the money. That will be invested in order to restore this building as you've seen from the plans that have been presented. So. With respect to parking in Wachung Plaza, which I know very well, having having formerly had my office there for fourteen years. Um, you know, Wachung Plaza is typical of most business districts in town and 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 in other towns. Um, there are older districts that were built at a time uh where very little parking was provided. Most of the properties in Wachung Plaza have no parking spaces or very little. I can think of only three buildings that have any onsite parking in Wachung Plaza. And the only one of those three that I think has conforming parking would be the the parking lot. In front of the fitness center adjacent to what used to be Boiling Springs Bank. Um, every property in Wachung Plaza has insufficient parking. And consequently, all of those properties rely on parking spa- uh public parking spaces for their employees and customers. Now, with respect to this particular property, the bank. You know, a bank has occupied this property since the time the building was built, as far as we can tell. Um, and the bank branch most recently operated with only nine parking spaces. Whereas thirty spaces were required under the zoning ordinance and therefore. Property had been operating with a twenty one space parking deficiency. The parking requirement for this building is thirty five spaces. We're providing ten spaces onsite plus an additional ten in permit spaces secured. We're providing ten spaces on site plus an additional ten in permit spaces secured in the municipal parking lot for a total of twenty parking spaces provided, leaving a fifteen space deficiency. Compare the fifteen space deficiency to the prior uh twenty-one space deficiency and we've actually gotten an improved situation by reducing the parking deficiency by six spaces. And as Ms. Dolan pointed out by virtue of her stud- or or traffic counts, on average, there are thirty-eight available metered parking spaces and and seventy-two um available permit spaces, although at the moment, uh there's no question those spaces are not available to the uh to the public, which is unfortunate, um and I hope we're going to see some changes from from the uh from the township. And just while I'm talking about that, um, Mr. Chairman, regarding your concerns about Saturday parking, um if there's going to be ten or eleven employees and ten or eleven um clients, the employ- you know, there's there, that's roughly twenty or twenty-two spaces, which we have um with the with the ten spaces on site and the ten um permit spaces in the lot. So there is adequate parking uh provided for this property. And I think the parking variance can be justified uh either under um C one or C two criteria, as Mr. Steck uh pointed out in his testimony. And just with respect to C two uh criteria, the benefits um not only are substantially outweigh any detriments and and the benefits of this project are many. First of all, you've got the preservation and restoration of this historic building to its original historic design uh and the beauty of the building. And in that regard, the Historic Preservation Commission enthusiastically endorsed this project. We have better onsite parking in the rear with screening from Far- from Fairfield Street, which hasn't existed before. We've got various landscaping improvements in the rear, also the addition of two street trees. We've eliminated the access, driveway access uh from Fairfield Street. And we've eliminated the encroachment of parking spaces and driveways into the public right of way. We're providing easy access for handicap parking, along with four electric vehicle charging stations. And last, well, not lastly, but next to last, the applicant commissioned an artist to create a custom sculpture uh as a trash enclosure um as an additional benefit um provided to the community. But most importantly, I think, the biggest benefit provided by this project is the addition of substantial activin- activity and vibrancy, uh which benefits the entire Watchon Plaza Business District. Uh as uh Margot Sage L. of Watchon Booksellers noted in the comments that she made at the at the last meeting, um this use is going to bring a a lot of people um to the plaza. Families shopping and eating, dropping off their their children or family members for a session at Montclair speech. They're going to obviously utilize, take advantage of the other businesses uh in the plaza. There'll be substantial um additional activity, which benefits the merchants and uh in turn benefits the entire community. Um there'll be a lot of foot traffic, a huge benefit to all of the local merchants uh resulting from this project. So um for all of those reasons, I think it should be clear that this is a another quality project uh from a quality developer, which will prove to be a great benefit to the Watchon Business District, and I would hope that the board uh will agree and will grant site plan approval as well as the three variances we've requested. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, Mr. Sullivan, just I do the ineligible board members still get to comment on the application?
They do.
Okay, we'll start discussion with Mr. McCullough.
Um, yeah, thank you very much. Uh I think uh I am reasonably supportive of this uh project and the variances that are requested. I hope that uh the final project will reflect the architectural rendition that we've been looking at. If so, I believe that it will make a stunning contribution to this particular neighborhood and to the community at large. So I'm I'm supportive. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
All right, I'm having some technical difficulty. Um, say that again?
Do you do you have any comments on the application?
So far, it looks like a pretty nice application, no questions.
And Mr. Simon?
Uh, I I like the project. Um it's always good to see a building um being repurposed. And uh it is and uh it will bring some activity and won't cause any further challenges than the bank that was existed there before, so I would be in favor.
And Ms. Harris?
Sorry about that. Um I'm in favor of the application, um and I um do applaud the applicant for going um the extra mile and um, you know, creating the art piece with the trash enclosure. Um uh as stated before, not necessary, but definitely appreciated.
Mr. Caulfield?
I'm in favor, Chair. Thank you.
And Mr. Fleischer?
I'm also in favor of the application and wanted to thank uh both Bob Silver, Paul, and and the whole professional team um for uh really excellent presentation and excellent project. There will be parking issues and as there are throughout Montclair, and I don't know how we're going to solve those for a while. But uh, you know, they took away parking on the entire north side of Fairfield because the traffic was getting difficult even on Fairfield. It's going to be there, but I don't think there's a solution to that that anybody uh working or developing around the plaza can solve on their own. It's a township responsibility and I I hope they finally get around to dealing with it. Um, other than that, with the uh elimination of the drop off spot and returning that to the parking count as a condition and with the condition of removing the gable roof on the trash enclosure and replacing with a flat roof, I'm I'm in favor of this project. I think it's a great project. I I would also add that for those who hadn't seen it, some of the buildings that have been empty on Watchon Plaza are now getting ready to reopen. And that will bring back more people to the plaza than have been there in the last couple of months. But uh we've lived with it for, I've lived with it for forty-something odd years and others have lived with it for longer. And we will continue to do so, but I think this is a great project and should move forward, so I'm in favor.
I'm also in favor of the application. Uh and Mr. Silver has always has done a great job on what he's doing with the building. And it's, you know, that he's doing it so quickly that from the when the bank left is is great. And, you know, I I do want to comment on the parking um and where I'm coming out, why I'm supporting this uh those variances. One, I have no problem with the sign variance. I mean, that's where the signage was historically on the building. It's where the signage belongs on this building and, you know, so I have no problem granting that variance. The parking, um I I am, you know, not unconcerned. I've been partially, there's a a dichotomy of what the applicant's saying of, oh, the clients are going to be dropped off versus we're bringing people back into the area. Well, if you're going to be dropped off, you're not parking and shopping. Well, you know, whoever is the client is being taken care of. But, you know, you're going to have nineteen, twenty staff members um there who'll be buying lunch at the various places you can get lunch in Watchon Plaza, which there are many. And they'll be patronizing other businesses there, um either during lunch or before or more likely after work. You know, so I mean, that's it. And I think realistically, some people will be staying while their client, the client is being um um services are being provided to the client and will do shopping. There are some spaces and I think, you know, that that this will be an enhancement to the area. It's bringing a building back to life. I think I am concerned, as indicated, about the Saturday morning parking. I think, you know, because the permit spaces are not available to the um the clientele. They're available to the staff and um the town has this interesting policy of enforcing parking where it'd be more logical that people be allowed to park there on in the commuter lots on weekends. But that's not for me to decide. Um so, you know, as I said, I'm in favor of all three variances. I think they've done a tremendous job with the site plan changes that they did. Um, the conditions um and I would suggest are that the applicant be required to maintain the ten permit spaces in the municipal lot, uh that they adhere to the conditions uh recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission, um that the window displays be as shown. I'm more interested in the structure versus exactly what is shown in each window. But I think what was shown is very attractive, serves a purpose of for people who are taller than me, who can look in the windows, not being able to see um the clients uh working with their therapist. Um and that that they should be as shown on uh Exhibit A eight. Um that the that there be the flat roof on the uh tr- trash recycling enclosure. Um that the marking on the drop off space be eliminated, that it just be a regular parking space. And on Saturdays, staff parking be limited to the spaces that are adjacent to the building and the permit spaces in the commuter lot, that they not use the back of the stack parking. So those would be available uh for people who are dropping, who are not dropping some off, but parking while uh the client is um meeting with the professional staff in the building. So there, you know, be a handful of spaces available, which I think will address the concerns I have. Um. And any other comments from members of the board? And if not, would someone like to make a motion?
Move approval of the application with the conditions as stated by the chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um it's just the, I I I guess you should call the roll of the four of us who are eligible to vote.
Sure, I'll go ahead and do that.
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Caulfield?
Yes.
And Fleischer?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I did, I'd like to thank the board for taking the time and for your great suggestions and and thank you for consideration approving this project.
Thank you.
Uh Tommy, the next applicant, um you need to pull up. I believe Mr. Gassion is here as the attorney for three seventy-six, three eighty Claremont Avenue.
I'm I'm working on it. Give me one sec.
Yeah, I mean, I can start reading the note, the, you know, the note announcing the application while you're.
Sure, and Mr. Gassion has been added as a parent.
Also, you should add William Stimmel.
All right, he has also been added. Anybody else?
Okay, this is the application of the Vadel Family Partners, the owner of property at three seventy-six, three eighty Claremont Avenue. This is an application for site plan approval with both variances to expand the current parking area for an existing multifamily residential use. Property is currently improved with three three-story brick apartment buildings and is located in the R two-two family zone. It's designated on the Township Tax Maps as Lot fourteen of Block four hundred and four. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section three forty-seven dash fifty-one for maximum permitted building height in feet and store. Where the maximum height is thirty-five feet, two and a half and two and a half stories and maximum height of greater than thirty-five feet and three stories are existing conditions uh from Montclair Code Section three forty-seven dash fifty-one for minimum rear yard setback. Where sixty-nine point one five feet is required and rear yard setback of twenty point oh six is an existing condition from Montclair Code Section three forty-seven dash fifty-one for maximum permitted building coverage of twenty-five percent is permitted and building coverage of twenty-eight point three percent is existing. Montclair Code Section three forty-seven dash fifty-two for minimum side yard setback requirement to any accessory structure where minimum six-foot setback is required and a two-point-seven-foot setback is existing. Montclair Code Section three forty-seven dash one oh two B, which required parking spaces to have a minimum stall size of nine feet by eighteen feet, where the existing parking spaces are smaller in size. From Montclair Code Section three forty-seven dash one oh two C, which required driveways to have a maximum gradient of ten percent within twenty feet of any property line and where gradient of fourteen percent is existing. From Montclair Code Section three forty-seven dash one oh four, which requires parking spaces to be a minimum of five feet from any lot line and parking spaces are proposed, which are two-point-five-six from the front lot line from Montclair Code Section two eighty-one dash nine D one, which requires minimum parking aisle width of twenty-four feet, where a parking aisle width of fourteen point six-five feet is proposed. From Montclair Code Section two eighty-one dash nine G, which requires parking areas to have a minimum fo- four-foot setback from the rear property line, where parking spaces are proposed, which are two-point-seven feet from the rear property line from Montclair Code Section two eighty-one dash nine point one, which requires a minimum width of eighteen feet for any two-way driveway and a width of fourteen point six-five feet for a two-way driveway is proposed from Montclair Code Section two eighty-one dash nine J, which permits a maximum grade of six percent for any parking spaces where a grade of fourteen percent is proposed. From Montclair Code Section three forty-seven dash one oh one, which requires a minimum of fifty-seven parking spaces and where twenty-three parking spaces are proposed. And from Montclair Code Section three forty-seven dash thirty-four, which prohibits parking spaces in any required front yard and parking spaces are proposed in the front yard area. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Mr. Gassion, are you ready to proceed?
I am, Mr. Chairman. After that litany of variances. Should I proceed?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council's name is Robert Gassion. The firm is Gassion Palamaco, five twenty-four Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant in this matter. Isole Vadel Family Partners LP. My clients are the owners of three seventy-six, three eighty Claremont Ave. The property is improved with three brick apartment buildings with thirty units, ten units in each building, thirty-one bedroom units. The property is located in a two-family zone and the existing multifamily use is a pre-existing, nonconforming use. The chairman recited a litany of variances. They're all pre-existing because this building was built in nineteen hundred and forty-seven. The um application does not intensify or expand the use in any way. It's an application to add parking to the site. The actual crucial variances are a variance being sought with regard to locating off-street parking between the main building and the curb on which the building fronts and a waiver having to do with the size of the proposed parking spaces. The witnesses you'll hear from are Andrew McCann of Isole Vadel and Bill Stimmel, who will serve as the engineer and planner. If I may, I'll call my first witness, Mr. McCann.
Mr. Gassion, it's Michael Sullivan. I just want to make sure, we heard, you know, twenty minutes of variances called out and you referenced that a number of them are are pre-existing conditions. We have a memo from our planning department uh that just identifies a single variance, which you referenced as the major variance, and and three or four waivers. Are are we agreeing that we're moving forward on that's the relief that's being sought here?
That's correct, Mr. Sullivan. That's the way I'm moving forward.
Okay, that's the way I would move forward.
Okay.
Okay, so call your first witness.
Okay, Mr. McCann.
Mr. McCann, would you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board.
Tommy, I think you can make Mr. McCann a panelist.
Oh, he's still left in the attendee list.
Okay.
He's in there now, sorry about. He's in there now, sorry about.
Mr. McCann, are you present?
Andrew, unmute yourself if you happen to be muted.
Yeah, and actually to turn your microphone on.
Well, we're waiting for him to turn his microphone on. Mr. Sullivan, would you define waiver for me, please?
So this is an application that includes site plan approval. And under the statute, there are certain waivers or exceptions are permitted. They are relief that's necessary, the proofs are lesser than a variance, and I can tell you what those proofs are if Mr. Stimmel, the planner, doesn't get to them.
Thank you.
Hopefully Mr. Stimmel will get to that.
He's still muted.
Okay, and also, Mr. McCann, if you're going to refer to a submitted plan, please let us know which plan you want us to bring up on the screen and we can then share it with the board members.
Yes, I think the planner slash engineer will refer to plans. I think that Mr. McCann will just be giving a history of the property and I will try calling him on his phone to see if he understands what he's doing to be heard.
I think, I think he's, his microphone's on. It wasn't.
Andrew, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you have to be sworn in.
Okay, Mr. McCann, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Can't hear him now, he shut it off again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Did you hear? Okay, do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address, please.
Andrew McCann, three seventy-six, three eighty Claremont Avenue, Montclair, New Jersey.
Okay, you can proceed, Mr. Gassion.
Mr. McCann, what is your occupation?
My wife and I own the apartment complex.
And that apartment complex is in what name?
It's under the name of Solder Vadel Family Partners LP.
And for how long have you been the owners of that property?
We are a third generation owners. My wife's grandmother started it and then upon her passing and my my mother-in-law passing, my wife and I have run the business for a little over twenty years now.
And based on your familiarity with the property, has it been generally the same structure and the same condition over all those years as it is today?
Yes, it has.
And do you have any idea when it was originally built?
Nineteen forty-seven.
And what is the total number of buildings?
Three buildings.
And the total number of units?
Ten units per building for a total of thirty.
Number of bedrooms per unit?
All are one-bedroom.
And what is the total number of parking spaces?
Right now, we have ten garages and six parking spaces on site.
Is there a need for additional spaces?
Yes, there is.
And what provisions have you made or tried to make with regards to obtaining additional spaces?
We actually went to the town approximately ten to twelve years ago and got five parking spots on Prospect with a permit that we pay, you know, every month for. And then we tried to get six spots in front of our building to eliminate, you know, some of the parking needs we have.
And how do you assign those spaces?
When a new tenant comes in, basically if they want a garage and there's one available, we give it to them. If if they need a spot, we give them a spot, but we're quickly running out of spots, running out of spots past there.
You actually do not even have one per unit, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, what is it you're before the board this evening seeking approval to do?
We are seeking approval to, to allow to have parking in the front of both buildings, which we would use, we'll go into further detail about this, but lots of shrubbery to mask them because we have looked extensively about parking in and around our buildings and it's just unfortunately not, it just won't happen at any cost whatsoever. We're just sort of landlocked.
And when did those spaces get added? The ones in front of the building?
Yeah, we, we added those about maybe a year, year and a half ago. And just as a side note, we were, unbeknownst to my wife and myself, we do a lot of improvements to our building and we go through the proper channels and get permits. We did not know that a permit was required, so it was an honest mistake on our part and we did pay a fine because we were not aware that a permit was required to do some parking in the front.
And subsequent to being cited, you then paid a fine in the municipal court, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And you indicated you looked for other off-site spaces and you've indicated to no avail.
We have looked extensively and asked around quite a bit and we've come up with absolutely nothing.
And what about the five permits? Have you sought additional permits?
We have, we've been on a waiting list for approximately eight years and we've had no movement whatsoever.
And can you explain to the board over the years, the change in the type of tenant with regard to demand for parking spaces?
Sure, when, when my, my mother-in-law ran it, there was many, many tenants had either one car or absolutely no cars. And as time has gone on, they've gone one tenant, one car. Now we're at the point now where because it's so expensive to live in and around Montclair, you have two tenants, husband and wife or boyfriend, girlfriend with two cars. And that is becoming the prevalent and they want and need parking because of, you know, need to get the jobs and whatnot, so it's gone sort of from bad to worse.
Now, is there anything further you would like to add with regard to your predicament with regard to trying to satisfy tenants' parking demand?
Just one last thing, we have tried other things, as I mentioned about getting parking on Prospect Street. We're on the waiting list for eight years, but even though they've told us at best you'll get another spot or two at best. We cannot park on Claremont Avenue, we cannot park on Bloomfield Avenue. We're very, very reluctant and to go anywhere else where people would have to walk. We unfortunately had a tenant who passed away because he walked across Bloomfield Avenue and got hit by a car. So we don't want to put our tenants in that predicament, so we are we, we really, for lack of another term, we really don't know where else to get parking.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of Mr. McCann.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
I guess I don't have any questions. I mean, parking is a problem in many places in Montclair and many homes in Montclair simply don't have parking. Many of whom have asked for permits to park in their front yards and many of whom have been denied permits to park in their front yards. For a whole variety of reasons. I, I don't have any questions. I know that throughout Montclair, there is a parking problem, particularly south of Bloomfield Avenue, basically. As well as in other places, but particularly there and it, and it is a problem. And I'm gonna listen, it's, it's when I drive by that, that complex, as I often do, because so many people make the left turn off of Bloomfield Avenue when they're heading eastbound on Prospect and then make the right and you come right through it, it's a mess right now. I'm, I'm not happy with the way it appears right now. Aside from the fact that the cars are there, so I, I want to listen to the presentation and ask some further questions because I'm not sure I understand what's been proposed. And I'll wait for the engineer to walk me through it.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. McCann, for your presentation. I have a question about I mean, you have the perception of your your residents in terms of working from home as opposed to being commuters to other locations. We've heard in other applications that there are increasing numbers of people who are choosing to work at home as opposed to working outside of the home. Can you, can you say a word in terms of how that impacts the parking situation on your property?
Sure, I'll be happy. So, so we know our tenants very, very well on a first-name basis because we're here on a daily basis. So I ask questions because the parking situation has become so dire for us. And when we get new tenants, when we, tenants leave for, you know, transfer or whatnot. I say, you know, can you, is it possible for you to walk to work or walk to town? And a lot of them will say, I can certainly walk down and get some buy my car to go food shopping. I need my car for work because I'm, I have to get to work one or two days a week. I am noticing, most of them have said I'm noticing that I'm being called back to the office one or two or three days a week. So I would think that that, at least for our tenants of late, the need for a car is slowed down a little bit since the pandemic, but is starting to tick up again to, quote, normalcy, I guess. Then it's your question.
Yeah, it, it does. And also, can you just sort of give us a picture of what parking looks like then during the course of the day as opposed to the evening? Because given the number of eagles that you're talking about in the night, is it a situation during the day in which there's still large number of cars that are parked on the facility? Or is it really just during the nighttime that the, the demand is very, very heavy for, for the parking?
It's, it's a good question. It's, it's really almost, for lack of a term, twenty-four seven because as you, as you mentioned, we do have some tenants that are working from home and go into the office one or two days a week. We have those that they have to go to the office every day. As a side note, we don't have any visitor parking whatsoever, so oftentimes when someone will say my my cousin or my mother or my friend is staying overnight, I say, I can't accommodate them. I don't have spots. When we have people that will deliver UPS or FedEx or DoorDash, they unfortunately end up double parking on Claremont, which is a, is a hazard in my, in my opinion, so the parking, we don't really have problems with people coming and going because they're coming, going throughout the day, but it's, the parking lot is, is pretty full. In, in my opinion, just when I'm up there throughout the day and the evening and weekends, it's, it's very rare we'll have an empty spot or two and if it is, a DoorDash guy will, will sneak in there to deliver something and sneak out again.
All right, then just finally, part of the reason why I'm asking that latter question is because obviously in this town, we have a concern about the clutter of vehicles. If you will.
Sure.
And, and so I just wanted to understand if, if you know, perhaps during the daytime that area might not look at, look as cluttered and therefore might be as problematic. It's really more of an evening, nighttime problem that you're, that you're facing, but I think based on what you're telling me, it's both the daytime and nighttime situation.
It is, and just as a side note, literally today, I had a tenant saying, my girlfriend wants to move in, can I have a spot? And I said, I unfortunately, I don't have a spot to give her. And he said, how much do I need to pay for a spot? I said, again, it's not cost, I, I don't have, I don't have a spot. He said, what's my alternative? I said, I, I don't, honestly, I don't, I don't know. Because the closest parking spot that he could pay for is, is a pretty significant walk down Claremont Avenue. I believe it's two oh five and even then, it's, you can't park there during the day, as I understand.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Moore, do you have any questions? We'll come back. Mr. Sullivan, do you have any questions? Mr. Moore, you?
Just a question, are the three buildings identical, meaning that they have all the same facilities within them?
Yes, that's correct. They're virtually identical.
And same same number of units, same facilities, completely?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I have at this time.
Ms. Harris, do you have any questions?
Yes, do you know if at any point the Parking Authority has been petitioned to allow overnight permit parking on any of the adjacent streets?
As I understand it, they have not allowed that because if you've, if you've gone down Claremont Avenue, it's, it's pretty congested during the day, so there's, there's parking there during the day, but it's somewhat problematic in my opinion. Parking at night has never been on the table and as I understand it, just from my informal discussions with them, that that was not going to be anything proposed in any, in the, quote, near future, so that's unfortunately, I don't think going to be an option for us.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
Yes, Chair, thanks. With the front parking that you have, how many spots do you have with those?
Sure, we would, we would add six more spots, three in front of three seventy-six and three in front of three seventy-eight. And as a side note, we tried everything we could in order to not have that happen, but we were you know, our backs against the wall, so to speak, that's but to answer your question, we had added six spots and it's still not enough, but it's getting us closer to where we need to be.
There are, they, they, they do park there today, correct? Are those six cars parked in those spots? Is that going to change differently or?
Well, yes and no, so you're correct. They are parking there today. If we were to be so fortunate as to be granted what we're asking, we would do significant shrubbery to, to block out the, the cars.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore? No questions?
Yes, this is Mr. McCullough. Just one other question for Mr. McCann. I was noticing, look me up figure eight on page five. It, it appears as though one or two of the garages is used for storage. Can you speak to that, please?
No, not, not currently right now. All the garages are used. There were, let me back up. There was one garage that was open for about a month or so because we had a tenant that was going away and we said, could we use your garage? Because we were doing some improvements in, in, in the buildings. And because of the supply chain issues, not to get off on a tangent, we, we had to order oh, there, you can see the picture there. We had to order all of our appliances and store them in that garage while we did the the improvements, but that was a very short-term piece. She is back now, so every single one of those garages is currently being used.
So none of, none of the residents are permitted to simply use the garage for storage purposes?
Other than Correct, correct. And that is, and that's in the lease that there's, they're only used for cars. We don't have the luxury of a storage unit, so to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to follow up on the question that Ms. Harris asked. Have you ever formally asked the town to allow overnight parking on Claremont or?
We have, ten or twelve years ago, actually, at that time, my superintendent, who has unfortunately since passed away, but my superintendent was the one that came up with the idea and we presented to the town to allow the parking on Prospect Street. We wanted all the spots and they said, we'll give you five because we have to leave the others open for other surrounding apartment complexes. And we can put you on a waiting list, which like, as I mentioned, we've been on a waiting list for about eight years.
Okay, but
nothing, I'm sorry, nothing on Prospect, I'm sorry, on Claremont Avenue since that time, because at that point we were told, and again, in my informal inquiries, I was told basically that is probably never going to happen. uh, I was told basically that is probably never going to happen in so many terms.
Okay, because the, the town is, I mean, over the years has gotten more liberal with allowing overnight parking is, just wondering. And then just, so I understand, um, so you're currently entitled to park five cars on Prospect. Correct?
Correct. Yes, that we pay for, correct.
And you and you have seventeen spaces, counting the handicap spaces on site, not counting the six in front? Is that correct?
Well, uh, sixteen. Uh, we have ten, we have ten garages and six parking spots.
The plans that were submitted says twelve car frame garage.
And there was an inconsistency, I guess, and I'm not sure why this happened. When the buildings were originally built back in 47, which was a little before my time, uh, there were supposed to be twelve garages. Um, I'm not sure why there's only, you know, there, there are supposed to be two more where there's a tree. I don't know why they're not there, but for whatever reason, they were never built.
So they're just ten garages and the six surface spaces. So you have twenty-one currently and you want to go to twenty-seven. Is that correct?
Correct. And we'd actually prefer to go more, but you know, obviously we're, we're limited by the amount of space we have. But that will certainly help, uh, the situation because right now we have sixteen spots. There's roughly a half a car per unit, which is not adequate. So that's why we were to get the five spots on Prospect. And hopefully we get approved for the six spots, which will bring us close to one spot per unit. Which is still not enough, but certainly closer to where we need to be.
Okay. Um, I think we'll do the same thing as last time. Wait for questions and comments from the public until both the witnesses testify.
Okay.
I suspect there will be overlap, um, on the questions.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's Michael Sullivan. Can I just ask Mr. McCann one question?
You may.
The, the plans indicate that there are fifteen one-bedroom unit apartments and fifteen two-bedroom apartment units. And I thought I heard twice that there are thirty-one bedroom unit apartments. You want to correct that discrepancy?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll correct that. Yeah, that was thrown around, but, uh, like I said, we've been running this for 20 years, so I'm very familiar. There are, um, three buildings, ten units per building for a total of thirty units, and they're all single, uh, one-bedroom units. Um, and the way that the layout is, there will never be two bedrooms. It just, it just never happened.
Okay, because the plans you submitted are, are to the contrary.
All right. My, my apologies. I'm not sure why, how that got that way. But yeah, they've always, since 1947, it's always been that way. So my apologies for the discrepancy.
Okay. Um, Mr. Gassio, you want to call Mr. Stimmel?
Please. William?
Mr. Stimmel, are you present?
I am present.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
William Stimmel, S.T.I.M.M.E.L. My professional address is P.O. Box 280, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Mr. Stimmel, how long have you been practicing in the field of engineering and planning? And from what school did you graduate?
I graduated from NJIT. I've been practicing since 2000.
Have you taken any postgraduate courses in conjunction with your work?
Uh, I have not.
And are you a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And are you also a licensed planner?
Yes, and both of my licenses are current.
Just briefly give the board the benefit of your experience.
Sure, I've been, uh, employed as an engineer and planner for the past 21 years in the state of New Jersey. I've been accepted as an expert witness in engineering and planning, uh, with a particular focus in traffic engineering in front of boards or on behalf of boards in over seventy municipalities in New Jersey, including in front of the Montclair Zoning Board.
Mr. Chairman, I submit that Mr. Stimmel is qualified both as an engineer as a planner.
Be accepted as such.
Thank you. Mr. Stimmel, would you review the existing conditions and please be careful to discuss the number of bedrooms in each of the units and the number of parking spaces and/or garages on site to make sure that is clear and consistent with what the plans were or where the plans have to be corrected?
Sure. And I'm going to refer to sheet one of two from the October 29th revision that was submitted for the board review. I'm sorry, do I share my screen or, uh, does the, does the board do that?
I'm going to pull it up. I'm, um, I'm trying to, what was the date on that again?
It was an October 29th revision.
That's the sheets we have.
Correct.
October 29th.
That's the revision date.
Let me, um, I'm sorry, give me one second.
Would it be easier if Mr. Stimmel shared his screen?
Um, we cannot give up control of the screen. Um, just need to locate these plans. Yeah, let me share my screen and, uh, you can let me know if these are, these are the right ones. Are these the?
Yes, that's it. Yep. So the existing property is, uh, an irregularly shaped lot with approximately thirty-four thousand five hundred square feet of total area. Board members, I'm sure, are all well familiar with it, but it's fairly steeply sloped with a change in elevation of thirty-three feet. When you go from the southwest corner to the northeast corners, that'd be diagonally across the property. There's three existing garden apartment buildings, each one of which provides ten one-bedroom units. So thirty-one bedroom units total. Uh, Mr. McCann is of course correct on that point. Uh, was a change that slipped through the cracks, but it's still noted in the parking calculation. There is currently one full movement driveway which passes between buildings 376 and 378, uh, leads to the parking area and the garages at the rear of the building. Now, the, uh, the parking area, i- it's, it's a little bit ambiguous, ambiguous. There's, uh, parking for five or six striped spaces behind building number 376. And then there are twelve, uh, garage parking spaces. I, uh, I took photographs of the site one of the times I went out to visit the site and I can confirm that they're numbered one through 12 and I can count 12 garage doors.
You're right, sorry.
Uh, so the, in addition to the buildings and the parking area and the garage, the site has extensive landscaping, including fourteen trees over ten-inch caliper throughout the remainder of the property. Uh, the applicant, and if you can see the, the stippled area adjacent to the entrance driveway, the applicant had constructed some, uh, gravel parking and boulder retaining walls in that area to provide six additional parking spaces. The limits of the boulder wall are noted by the, uh, the circles, um, shown underneath that stippling.
Can we have that in large? Can we have that view in large, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So you, you can see the, the, the boulder walls are located. There's two tiers on both sides of the driveway. Uh, does not, of course, meet the standards in terms of the aisle width or the depth of the parking spaces. And as the applicant has knowledge, uh, has acknowledged, he didn't realize that a permit was required for that type of work. And obviously, uh, you know, is apologetic for that. But those are the existing conditions on the subject property.
Mr. Stimmel, can you please review the proposed conditions?
Sure. For, first and foremost, there's no changes to the buildings themselves, no changes to the number of units, no changes to the bedroom count. So there's thirty-one bedroom units there now. There will be thirty-one bedroom units there in the future. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, uh, Mr. Sibyl, if we could zoom in on that area again. Uh, the applicant proposes to modify the front yard parking area to, uh, essentially comply with the dimensional requirements. As it's shown on the plan, we propose nine by eighteen parking spaces to comply with RSIS requirements along with a twenty-four foot aisle. In order to do that, we're going to need to remove the boulder walls and provide, uh, a section of block wall on both sides of the parking area along with additional curbing. Uh, the applicant is proposing substantial landscaping to screen the parking area from Clermont and to improve the overall aesthetics to the site. In addition to the landscaping at the, uh, at the sides of the parking area and along the front of the parking area, uh, if we could just zoom out a bit, we are proposing, uh, two ornamental trees located at the northwest and northeast corners of the property along with an additional, uh, perennial planting area located adjacent to the corner of Clermont and Prospect. In addition to those changes, the applicant is proposing to repave and re-stripe the existing parking lot. Uh, the grading will essentially be maintained in the existing parking lot until you get up to the newly created six parking spaces. There will be four traditional, uh, perpendicular parking spaces behind number 376 and then a handicap parking space with the handicap aisle eight foot and eight foot wide to comply with the ADA requirements adjacent to those perpendicular parking spaces. Uh, there is a fourteen point six-five foot aisle for two-way traffic here, which is of course, substandard twenty-four foot is the typical requirement for two-way traffic. However, uh, we note that the existing aisle widths are, uh, substandard as the, as the striping is currently painted and anticipate that the handicap parking space would be occupied, but the eight-foot striped aisle adjacent to it would be available for additional maneuvering area. Uh, there's going to be proposed, uh, three electric vehicle charging spaces behind number 376 to comply with the, uh, recently adopted requirements for electric vehicle charging. And then the next two sets of three parking spaces would be provided in the easternmost garages, uh, for spaces four through six, which would be garages one, two, and three, and spaces seven through nine, which would be in garages four, five, and six. So those are the, excuse me, uh, proposed conditions on the subject property.
When you appeared before the Development Review Committee, did they make certain recommendations to your client?
Sure, we went to the, the DRC back in September of 2021 and received, uh, memo with five comments from the, the committee at that time. The first was to amend the site plan to show existing trees on the subject property so that the board can appropriately evaluate to determine if additional parking can be provided on site within a variance. So if the board members, uh, review, we noted the location of existing trees running along Clermont Avenue, but also trees within the interior of the property. And most notably, there is, uh, six, seven additional, uh, large trees behind buildings 378 and 380, which would be the potential locations for rear yard parking. In order to provide parking in that area, obviously, we'd need to cut down those trees. Uh, there's also additional grading issues associated with providing parking behind number 378, but we, we didn't really pursue it further than, uh, once we realized the number of trees that we'd have to take out. The second comment was that the parking spaces in the front yard should be enlarged to more closely conform to the minimum requirement, um, provide a larger aisle, which we revised the plan to reflect that. The third was to, uh, include details for the retaining wall adjacent to the proposed parking area. We provided that. The fourth was to note the location of charging stations, which we did. And then the fifth was to provide additional landscaping to better screen the parking area. I'd just like to add, as far as the landscaping goes, and we did provide additional landscaping compared to what the, the DRC had seen. Uh, we tried to provide plants that were on the approved Essex County native plant list. Uh, we show some additional areas for perennial plantings. Those are the crosshatched areas on either side of the driveway and adjacent to the corner, uh, because the, the applicant, Mr. McCann and his wife, both have obviously an interest in the upkeep of the property and, and wanted to have some input into how it would look in the future. But the, the stipulation was made and noted on the plan that those, again, would comply with the uh, native plant list for Essex County.
Mr. Stimmel, you heard the conversation between counsel and myself at the beginning of the meeting. Would you please review the zoning ordinance, uh, with that thought in mind? And discuss the variance at hand and the waivers being sought?
Certainly. Uh, just briefly, the site is located in the R2 two-family zone. Principal permitted uses are one and two-family detached dwellings as well as municipal facilities. Obviously, the garden apartments are not a permitted use. However, the site was approved for this development by the Montclair Zoning Board in 1947. And since its construction has more or less operated in this, uh, configuration, as you see it for the ensuing seventy-four years. Uh, there's no change again proposed to the size of the buildings, the footprint of the buildings, the number of apartments, the bedroom count, or the interior of the buildings. However, there are some C variances and design waivers which are impacted by the application. Uh, first, and I think most notably, is the front yard parking requirement. No front yard parking is permitted, whereas we are proposing six front yard parking spaces off of Clermont Avenue. Those six parking spaces are going to be built along the existing driveway, which leads to the rear parking area. Uh, does result in some additional impervious coverage. The net change in impervious coverage would be about eleven hundred square feet. Uh, the visual impacts, a- and I think, uh, when you're talking about a prohibition on front yard parking, I think it's primarily the, the visual impacts, the aesthetics that are the, the concern with that, uh, will be mitigated by the topography of the site and the landscaping as well. To, to a very large degree, we are open to providing different landscaping, more landscaping should the board require it. But we think what we have provided will adequately screen the proposed parking area while still allowing visibility for cars pulling into the driveway as well as backing in and out of the parking spaces. As far as the design waivers are concerned, we have a design waiver for minimum parking dimensions where the Montclair ordinance requires nine by nineteen parking spaces. We provide nine by eighteen. This is one area where we could certainly accommodate the board if they wanted the longer parking spaces. I would just note that we comply with the RSIF standard. A typical passenger car is going to be less than eighteen feet in length. Uh, if we did provide the additional depth, we would have small increase in impervious coverage. It would, uh, increase, you know, by, by a concomitant amount, the visual impact of the front yard parking. So those are the concerns related to that. Uh, minimum parking aisle width where fourteen point six-five feet is proposed. Again, that's at the rear of the building between those rear parking spaces and the garage. This effectively matches the existing conditions. Uh, it anticipates the use of that striped aisle for additional maneuvering area, providing an effective dimension of nineteen point seven feet at the narrowest point. Again, it's still substandard, but it, it brings it much more into compliance with the typical twenty-four foot requirement. Uh, based on my professional experience, I believe that this layout is adequate for this type of low volume and low turnover parking area. Uh, we, we require a waiver for front yard parking setback where four feet is required, two point five-six feet is proposed. The, uh, it should be noted that there is a substantial setback from the curb to the property line at that location. You've got about fourteen feet. So the two point five-six feet are on top of the existing fourteen feet. But again, we're proposing extensive screening in that area to mitigate the visual impact of the.
Can we see that part of the plan again? Because all we're looking at is the whole back.
Sure, sure. If we could just pan down a second. So the, the two point five-six is right here adjacent to the entrance driveway. It's the, the same dimension on both sides. But again, we've got a, a fourteen foot, uh, dimension from the curb line to the property line in that location. So all told, you're sixteen and a half feet plus or minus from the curb to the first parking space. Uh, that's the third design waiver that's noted. And then the fourth waiver is the maximum front yard wall height where four and a half feet is permitted, five feet is proposed. And that five feet just pertains to a small corner of the southwest portion of the parking lot adjacent to the steps. Uh, it's possible that we could modify the grading to eliminate the need for the variance, but to the extent that's necessary, uh, we would request it.
Mr. Stimmel, that's not identified on Ms. Tally's memo, correct?
It is not.
I, I believe the, hmm.
It's on the back page under the planning considerations, the back page of that.
Bear with me one second.
Okay, if I'm looking at the planning consideration, it says the applicant should provide details about the height of the proposed retaining walls. And those are the walls adjacent to the new parking spaces in the front yard. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and the maximum permitted height in the front yard is four point five feet and your walls are how, how tall?
Five feet just at that one corner. Five feet just at that one corner. It's generally less than that.
What corner is that describe that?
The southwest corner of the proposed parking area adjacent to the newly constructed steps.
And that, that is a waiver also, okay.
That is a waiver.
Actually, no, that would be, that would be a variance. To exceed the maximum retaining wall height would be a variance from the zoning ordinance, not a waiver.
Do, do, is that section identified?
Uh, let's see.
And Mr. Stimel, I assume that that wall height can't be reduced to conform, is that correct?
That's my question, Bill. If we had to, could we not reduce that?
It'd be difficult to do it. Uh, we could probably come up with a way. You're, you're somewhat limited because you've got a, you've got to make the grade of the parking more or less match the grade of the existing driveway, and then you also have to hit the height of the landing in front of the building. Uh, so, yeah, we, we could take a look at it.
If the board was unwilling to give that variance, could you get it done in some manner, shape, or form?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything further with regard to the planning comments, Mr. Stimel, the C-one or C-two comments, anything having to do with that?
Uh, just in terms of presenting the, the, the variances and waivers that are required, no. In terms of providing the, the positive and negative criteria, then, then yes, of, of course.
Would you please review that?
Sure, the, uh, the positive criteria, uh, can be, uh, justified by one of two ways. The first is the C-one hardship in cases of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific piece of property, or by reason of exceptional conditions, physical features, or other situation uniquely affecting a specific property and the structures located lawfully thereon. Again, this is a longstanding existing use which was approved by the zoning board in nineteen forty-seven. Been used as garden apartment since that time. Obviously, I, I don't think anyone would be surprised to note that the number of cars per person, in addition to the number of cars just broadly across the population, has increased greatly over that period of time. Uh, data I reviewed showed point two-six cars per person in the United States in nineteen forty-seven versus point eight-three cars per person in twenty eighteen, which was the last year that data was available. Uh, the, the twenty-one parking spaces provided for thirty apartments was reasonable in nineteen forty-seven. There was no issue made in the approving resolution of insufficient parking at that time. I think it's clearly insufficient by current standards, and I think that's bolstered by the information provided by Mr. McCann about his tenants and how they use the property. There's limited area behind the building to provide parking, and most of it is occupied by the existing parking and circulation areas. Uh, as you travel to the western portion of the site, that area is just landscape, but the, the width behind the, or the width from the rear of the building to the rear property line narrows down, and, uh, you've only got fifteen feet as you approach Prospect. Uh, in addition to that, you've got a number of large existing trees, which I think the applicant and I believe the board as well would like to maintain in that area. So there's really limited area back there to provide additional parking to meet what is the latent demand for both the current tenants of the property and future tenants as well. So the topography, the presence of the large trees, the size and shape of the property, and the location of the buildings with, within the property make providing additional parking there difficult. Uh, we did look into providing parking behind building number three seventy-six. I believe that was one of the comments that came up at the, the DRC meeting, but didn't make it into the memo. Found that, um, we would have to do extensive re-grading of the site, provide a number of very large retaining walls, remove seven of the large trees ranging in size from ten inch to forty-one inch caliper, uh, for a gain of about six parking spaces. That was the best we could do. Just, uh, back of the, back of the napkin calculation on that, it came out to be something like a hundred twenty thousand dollars for six parking spaces. Uh, it didn't seem reasonable or even something that the board would really think was beneficial when you take into account the landscaping. Uh, so, uh, the applicant is proposing to construct these additional spaces to address a portion of the unmet demand for the current residents. Uh, there's one other comment that I'd make. Um, and if I could just flip to sheet two, please, for a second, the grading sheet. If, if you could zoom in on that central aisle. The current elevation at the front of the property where the driveway is located is about four hundred thirty-one feet, and it's four hundred forty-four feet at the back corner of the buildings. Uh, a- and we're more or less married to those grades. We, we can't change the elevation in the public right of way, and we can't reasonably change the elevation in the rear parking area because that's where all the garages are located. So the issues with the, the slope of the, the driveway and the, the slope of the parking spaces are tied to that because there's no way to address that grading issue in, in the, in the existing driveway. So, uh, those are the, uh, reasons why I believe the board will be justified to grant the positive criteria as it relates to the, the hardship standard. The negative criteria that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, that it will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Uh, I, I believe, I, I, uh, in my professional opinion, I hope we have shown that the factors affecting the property are, are somewhat unique in terms of the grading, the, uh, existing landscaping, the location of the buildings, and the dimensions of the property. I don't believe it will substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. This is a limited number of new parking spaces which are going to be accessed via the existing driveway. Driveway currently provides access to the rear yard parking area. With the additional landscaping and the topography of Claremont Avenue along the front of the site, um, I, it, it's my opinion that the aesthetic impacts of the front yard parking will be mitigated by the landscaping and the topography. And I don't see, uh, substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance based on the, uh, particulars of this site and the, the clear need for additional parking in this location. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further wit- no further witnesses and no further questions for this witness.
Okay. Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
Just, just to clarify, on, on this side of Claremont Avenue, there's no sidewalks, is that correct?
There's no sidewalk, correct.
So how do, how does, how do pedestrians get? Let's go back to the plan. We could. How do pedestrians get out to a sidewalk? Get out to a place where they can safely walk? For example, I, it's clear they can't get out. Does everybody go to Prospect? Is, because that's where all the walkways go. Is that, am I reading that correct? That there's, there's no pedestrian access to Claremont at all?
I, if we could, uh, yeah, we, we, uh, we have the right view now. Uh, Mr. Mr. Fleischer is correct, there's no direct pedestrian access to Claremont. There's walkways along the, uh, front of the buildings and the rear of, uh, building three seventy-eight, which leads to three eighty, but doesn't connect to Prospect. Uh, so the only direct pedestrian connection is to Prospect, but practically speaking, pedestrians from the buildings who would be going out to Claremont would likely walk down the driveway and then walk along that fourteen-foot grass area between the curb and the property line.
A- and that's sort of why I asked the question, so. I have, I have a couple of questions here. Let's go back and just look at, at the layout of the new driveway. Let's shift back to the, to the east, please. I guess my question is, first of all, you're, a lot of the plantings are now in the public domain. They're out off, outside of your property line and on the, um, in, in what I'll call the public realm that you basically say people end up walking through when they want to go down Claremont Avenue. Is that not correct?
Uh, that is correct.
So my first question is, I'm concerned about taking over part of the public domain, and I don't know whether that's an issue here or not, but I think it needs to be. We just went through that on another application where there was some objection to screening and plantings in the public domain. Um, though that was adjacent to a sidewalk, that's why I asked the question about the sidewalk, because this is technically not a sidewalk. Um, a- and, and there's clearly in your mind. Oh, let me, let me ask the question further. The person coming out of three seventy-six who wants to walk on a sidewalk, crosses the driveway, goes up a flight of stairs, how, how do they, how do they maneuver? I'm trying to figure out what that stairway.
Right, if you come out of the front of building three seventy-six, you, you walk down the sidewalk, you go down the steps, and then you land in the new parking area. And then you walk out to Claremont, and, uh, i- if you're, if you're going to Prospect, of course, you, you'd continue across the face of three seventy-eight and three eighty using those existing walkways. If you're going to the, to the east presumably on Claremont, you would, uh, walk in the, in the grass area between the, uh, curb and the property line. And the, the minimum dimension between the, uh, eighteen-inch maple shown to the east of the driveway and that perennial planting area is four feet, but we could expand that a little bit if that was a, a concern of the board. Uh, really, the, the perennial shown in those cross-hatched areas are just intended to be ornamental on top of, uh, the, the screening function of the specified, uh, plants.
And, and the, what about the wall I'm seeing on the, uh, on the northeast? What, that looks like another wall. Is that another retaining wall?
Sure, that's a short retaining wall.
And when I go up on that side, that is not a retaining wall at the top, that is merely a curb.
That transitions to the curb as the elevation of the site becomes closer to the elevation of the parking area there.
What, what, so as I understand it, you come out of three seventy-six, you walk down a flight of stairs to get to the driveway.
Right.
Then on the other side, you then walk up a flight of stairs to get to the continuation of the sidewalk?
Correct. Correct. And that's the existing condition now, so we're maintaining that.
I, I guess I'm asking whether something. I just, when, when I drive by, I even see cars parked in the driveway right now. Uh, at least the ones I've seen are on one side of the driveway or another, right between the buildings. That's been my experience, uh, when I look at the, at, at that, at the site. And when I drive by the site, there are not only cars in this currently bolder, uh, gravelled area, there are also cars on the driveway as well, which clearly there should not be if we're claiming this is an open driveway with access to the rear. Um, a- and I, and I look to both the owner as well as the engineer, how are you going to prevent people from parking in that driveway? Because there are definitely people who park there now.
Mr. McCann, would you comment on that and respond to Mr. Fleischer's question as to what happens there? And if there is an issue, how you can possibly prevent it?
Sure, uh, Mr. Fleischer, so what we do right now, uh, I have a superintendent, so when someone is parking there, and oftentimes it's a visitor, it's a door dash, it's somebody delivering something, uh, we ask them to move because that's not an appropriate spot. Sometimes we don't know who they are, so we have to call our tenants and try to find out who that is and say, unfortunately, you're not able to park there. Um, at the time when we did, we did this, we were going to put up some signs, but, uh, it was advised that let's go, you know, meet where we are today and talk about this before we were to do anything. But we have no problem if we wanted us to put up no parking signs or, or things like that, uh, to try to stop people from parking there that are probably just coming in quickly or whatnot, or maybe friends thing overnight, those types of things.
So you're going to create a new curb cut now for the new driveway?
I'm sorry?
You're creating.
Mr. Stimel could better answer that question. Bill?
You're creating a new curb cut for the new driveway, is that correct? You must be. I'm sorry, I can't hear, so.
He's on mute, I'm sorry.
My apologies, that's an existing curb cut.
Well, it's not where the driveway angle is shown, so am I missing something? Because it's showing the existing driveway is sort of being curved in.
The, the interesting thing about the original approval is that the existing driveway location did not line up directly with the aisle between buildings three seventy-six and three seventy-eight. So we are shifting the driveway location slightly. It will be significantly narrower than what's, what was approved and what's there, but it, it's in the location of the same curb cut.
No, I, well, again, I'm looking, and I'm trying to come down, I'm trying to follow the driveway down. And on the east side, there's a line that appears to hit the, hit the curb that is different than the line where your driveway is now going to be. And on the west side, it appears that the driveway significantly eats into the zone of the, of that bolder parking area. Am I missing something there? Because I assume that's where the existing curb cut is, is between the, the two lines that represent where the roadway comes out.
Correct, the existing curb cut is between the two lines where the roadway comes out. That's about thirty-four feet wide a- as it exists now. The proposed driveway will be twenty feet wide, plus the curb on either side would, would bring it to about twenty-one feet. And it would shift, uh, approximately five feet to the east.
Okay, so there is going to be a slight change. Did you look at, or is it possible to create another drive in between, uh, three seventy-eight and three eighty?
So i- if we, uh, keep this view, but just pan a little bit to the south, the, um, you, you've got two twenty, a twenty-four-foot linden tree and a twenty-five-foot linden tree, which would be right in the location of that proposed driveway. And then as you slide to the, the back of the buildings, three seventy-eight and three eighty, you've got, uh, magnolia located directly in line with that aisle. You've got a thirty-three-inch maple, you've got a, a twin-stem magnolia, a forty-one-inch oak. So all of those would be the, the trees that were in the locations that I had mentioned before, that if we, if we made a second driveway to the back, that we would, uh, we, we would have to eliminate those.
Okay, so let's go back down on the side to where the sidewalk might be now or in the future. Um, and I ask, I, I, I'm not certain about the rules with regard to planting in the zone outside of the property, um, line, and whether or not that represents, since that's been represented as part of the visual screening of the parking areas, whether that's permitted plantings where they're shown.
I would imagine there would be some kind of license required for that.
So you would seek that license. If you did not get the license, what else might you be able to do to?
Uh, well, there, there's a couple of options. The, the one would be to shift that sidewalk in front of building three seventy-six closer to the building and slide those spaces to the interior. Uh, you, you could probably mirror that on the other side. Uh, so you'd slide all six parking spaces, about three and a half, four feet closer to the building, slide the sidewalks closer to the building, and then provide some kind of plantings for screening between the property line and the first parking spaces, although questionable as to whether you'd have to use something else in that location.
Did you? I just asked one question. Mr. Stimel, did you at some point say that this area has a fourteen-foot right of way as opposed to the normal ten-foot right of way?
Correct.
Mr. Fleischer, in light of that, I would think if we went to the appropriate governing body, that they would probably allow the plantings in that extra four feet. Again, in light of the fact that there's a unique right-of-way, four feet more than the norm at this location.
Okay, let me, let me just keep going, and I'll be, I'll wrap it up quickly. Why not, since you're permitted to have a four-foot fence on the pro- on the property line in your front yard, why not actually place a four-foot fence along that side of? four foot fence along that side of the parking areas? And I guess part of the reason is door openings, I get it. But why not take advantage of the fact that you could shield these visually with a fence from people who are going to be either walking on that unpaved area or just driving by and essentially have much less visibility for the parking than simply having the car literally sitting right there on the, on the, on the right of way.
I, I think we'd certainly be open to that. We went with the landscaping approach because we thought the, the board would be more amenable to it. The only thing I'd say with the fence is the, the same concern I would have with the landscaping is that you, you'd want to end it in a spot where people pulling into the driveway would be able to see cars in those first spaces backing out.
I agree. One of my, one of my follow-up questions would have been, can you, at the point where this exists, can you pull the parking spaces further in? So that instead of being right at what I'll call almost the driveway line, they were like, the Westley parking space, pull it further west by about three or four feet so that you could both have the parking space and then use the fence in front of it or shielding in front of the entire vehicle and then still have room to see because you'd have much wider opening or the same with opening, but you'd have the visibility because the plantings would have stopped before the, before you hit a point where you, where you're coming out and there might be people there.
Certainly, again, I think we'd be open to it. Uh, we were trying to minimize the, the footprint of the parking area. So certainly we'd be open to it.
Okay, I, I, and, and I believe others to talk about the whole concept of front yard parking because, as I said, there are communities and neighborhoods with even greater parking needs that we have not allowed front yard parking in. And I'm not sure why this is one that suddenly on a major thoroughfare through the town, which Claremont is, that we should allow it there when we've denied it in so many other situations for both even simple one and two family homes. We've not allowed parking, and sometimes they have to pay substantial rent to adjacent neighbors or property owners to park cars. So I put that on the table for, and I hope some of my colleagues will follow up on that.
Fleischer, can I just make one comment or respond to that?
Sure.
You've got a very unique location of this property. There's just nowhere to go to find a parking space. I happen to live very close by, I ride by here on a regular basis. Where do you go? Each case, obviously, you're an expert, you've been on a board as long as I can remember. Each case has to be taken on its own. This location is different from anything else you've had in front of you before. One, two family home, whatever it is, the steep slope, the location, the unavailable parking in the area. It's a very, very difficult building to work with. Again, as Mr., and I don't want to give my summation, but one more point, as Mr. Stimmel pointed out, when this building was built in nineteen forty-seven, there was twenty-seven per, uh, twenty-seven cars per one hundred people. Now you got eighty-something cars per one hundred people. We're in a different world today than when this was put up, a very, very unique location. And thank you for letting me say something.
That's fine. Thank you. I'm done.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Stimmel, just two, two things for you. Uh, one of them is, can you speak to how many spaces would be utilized currently by either the owners or by people that are staffing these buildings, presumably given the number of units? Um, there are some, you mentioned, I think a superintendent was mentioned, there might be others. Okay, just speak to that, please.
Mr. McCann would probably better be able to answer that than, than I would be.
Sure, Mr. McCullough, we, we currently, if we have any, um, cleaning people or painting people, we require them to park in the street. Uh, but they're not here overnight, so that doesn't cause a problem for us because they leave at five o'clock. So when the parking is, has gone away, so. That, that, hopefully that, that answers your question.
And, and the same would apply to yourself and to, and to your life zones.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. So back to you, Mr. Stimmel. The, the other question I have is now, looking at this area where the six spaces are being proposed and the landscaping, can you speak to lighting in this area? Because obviously, these spaces are now further away from the building. I know you, currently there is some, some experience, given the fact that there is a temporary arrangement that is in place. So what is the, what is the thought about lighting in this particular area in order to provide for safety for those that might be utilizing this space, especially after homes?
Yeah, we, we had not shown any proposed lighting in that area. We wanted to try to maintain as much of a residential appearance to the, the parking area as we could. Uh, if the board would be open to the idea and was concerned about lighting in the area, we could certainly provide some low, uh, uh, bollard type lighting along the curb or, uh, even minimal wall mounted lighting just to, just to illuminate the ground area for people parking the cars. But we, we wanted to keep it as, as limited as possible because we didn't want it to look like a, a parking lot as much as we could prevent that.
But currently during the nighttime, is it relatively dark in this area or not?
Uh, I would think that yes, it would be with the, with, at, at least during the summer months with the canopy of trees. There's, uh, there's lantern style lighting on the fronts of the existing buildings, but that's it in terms of parking in the, in the front area.
Mr. McCann, do you want to say something about that?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I get interjected. Yeah, so, so Mr. Stimmel was correct on, we have lights in front of, of, of all the buildings. And also, um, at the end of the driveway, there is a, um, a street light that really fortunately cascades into our driveway and into the proposed parking area. So as, as Mr. Stimmel suggested, if, if the board wants us to add more lighting, we'd be happy to do so. But as it stands right now, the lighting is actually not, not that bad.
Well, I, I just might offer that curb lighting might be, be helpful.
Sure. Not a problem.
That's, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, um, so looking at the parking spaces in this, um, and, and the, the area along the back where there would normally be a sidewalk, have you taken any consideration into adding a sidewalk there to kind of, to, to add to this enhancement to, um, to make it more, um, and, I'd say inviting or just easy to go from one building to the next?
That was a sidewalk at the, at the rear of the building, Mr. Moore?
Yes, right on Claremont. So where the parking is proposed, and I believe my colleague Fleischer had mentioned that there's no sidewalk there, it's just grass.
Oh, correct. Along Claremont Avenue, there, there's no sidewalk proposed in that area. We had not looked at that. The site has two hundred seventy-six feet of frontage along Claremont Avenue. And the, the, the cost of putting in sidewalk there might be, uh, might be beyond the scope of the project. The, the other thing I'd note is that you do have a lot of, uh, large established trees in the area. I'd be a little bit concerned about, uh, cutting into the, the roots of those trees to put the sidewalk in. Uh, but the sidewalk along Claremont was, was not something we had investigated.
Just thinking about, you know, with, with the parking being up so close to the street, and it is a little different than what we normally do in the town, just thinking of some ways where it would be inviting and enticing. I do think that it's a good idea to enhance what's already existing because what is there certainly does need the improvement. But I would, uh, you know, recommend you consider possibly putting a sidewalk and even, even the lighting, as Mr. McCullough mentioned as well. Just because that is a very busy street. And, um, certainly, you know, the lighting would be helpful and, uh, the, the continued sidewalk where there isn't a disruption where you would possibly have to walk across the street to be able to, uh, continue along. But, um, yeah, that's, that's my question. Would you consider that? Andrew?
Yeah, if, if I could, um, Mr. Moore, just so, my own observation, this is nothing, um, been working around the property over the last twenty years. I don't see a whole lot of people walking on our side of the street. Maybe it's because there's no sidewalk, or maybe they decide to go on the other. I'm not, I'm not quite sure what it is, uh, just people in general. Because people going up Claremont, you really, the only way you're going up there is you're going into Verona. And that whole section of Route twenty-three, that's a pretty dangerous section. So my guess is people are not walking up there for any reason. So that, that's why I don't see a whole lot of volume, uh, just general pedestrians. However, our, our existing tenants, and I see this just because they have dogs, if they walk out of three seventy-six, for example, they'll walk out the, uh, the, the existing walkway, the walk down the three steps across the driveway, walk up the steps, the three seventy-eight, and then go in front of three seventy-eight, in front of three eighty, and then, and get to the sidewalk on Prospect. And then I would imagine they either cross the street to go continue on Prospect before they go up to Bloomton Avenue is my unscientific observations.
And I believe right across the street is the Graz Park.
Correct.
So, so, so walking along that back end, they, people could be walking to the park. Um, you know, just something to, to consider because, um, the grass towards the back does look a little unfinished, you know? And, and so that would detract from, um, glass, trash, anything like that. But, uh, but in terms of this parking, I think that, uh, it, it does look good, but just take that into consideration, including the lighting as well, additional lighting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one thing to my response. I, I, I looked at the site photos while, while Mr. McCann was speaking and noted that because of the, the grading in the right of way, we'd probably need to put up a low retaining wall along the front edge in order to provide a sidewalk that didn't go over two percent cross slope. So, you know, you need to provide a retaining wall for a lot of that run and then also the, the sidewalk itself. So it would be a pretty pricey improvement.
Mr. Simon, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. Um, the, the returning wall that, uh, that exceeds the four point five on the northwest side, is that for the full length of the wall or just a one section because of grading?
That, that's just for one small section. That's just the peak height of that wall. But going to the east and going to the north, the, the rest of that wall is shorter than the four and a half foot limit.
How short?
Uh, if we could flip to the grading plan, please? So right here, that wall height is five feet. As you go down to, uh, as you go down toward Claremont, the height drops and drops until it basically meets the height of the curb. It drops down to six inches. Uh, it's, uh, it drops down a little bit, but not quite as much as you approach the, uh, two-way circulation aisle. So it drops down, uh, as the, as the steps go down and then as the, the second flight of steps go down, it drops down to match.
Okay. Um, and my other question is, uh, in behind three seventy-six, the parking areas in the back, um, the, the handicap, I guess you go back to the first, um, the other page. The area, those two, uh, parking, the handicap and the new area, has that already been marked? Do they exist today?
Yes, that, there is existing parking there under, uh, uh, if you went out to the site today, you can see that the gray lines underneath the proposed striping are the locations of the existing parking spaces. So you've got one that begins at the, the head of the handicap parking space, two, three, four, five, and then it's questionable whether there's another one at the end of the building adjacent to those steps that go down along the east side of three seventy-six. Uh, so there's, there's five or six parking spaces back there right now.
So with the parking, with the handicap and that other space oriented that way, I'm a little concerned that the person in, on that outer parking space would be opening the door into that, the, basically the driveway, which is already more narrow. And at the same point, the, that fourteen point five, if there's a garage in that space, that doesn't give much room to back out if there's a car parked in that location.
Right, so we, we did think about that. Obviously, part of the concern or, or part of the thought process in designing, uh, parking for a facility like this is that it's all residential. It's going to be pretty low turnover of parking and pretty low volume of movements in and out of the driveway. So while that is more or less an existing condition, we, we did give that some thought. But we feel that with the additional eight-foot striped aisle there, uh, you end up with about nineteen feet between the face of the garage and, uh, and the beginning of that handicap parking space. We felt that that was adequate maneuvering, um, uh, for this type of residential use. The other portion of it is that, uh, there, there's a little bit of property management involved in this, which I'm, I'm sure Mr. McCann loves to hear, but that if you have a, a bunch of people with medium-sized cars and one person who drives a, a large van, let's say, then you would, you would have to manage those parking spaces so the person with the large van isn't going to be parking in the bay directly opposite the handicap space. So that, that's part of it, too.
Which is correct, which is what we currently do right now.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, do you have any questions?
Um, just to piggyback off, off of Mr. Simon's questions. Um, have you given any thoughts, maybe instead of having that handicap space at the corner, maybe putting it on the other side of the stair? Where it says twenty point oh seven feet? Um, just to give everyone a little bit more breathing room to get in and out of these spaces.
Uh, we could, uh, you know, we, we, we could potentially put a space over there. Uh, the, the drop-off, once you get past that, uh, uh, shows as a curb on here, once you get past that is pretty steep. So you'd need to build a substantial wall in that location. I mean, you could, you know, all, all things are, are doable. Let's say, at, at some point, it does become a consideration of cost. We, uh, we believe, or I believe that the location proposed is adequate. Um, but certainly we understand the board's concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, Chair. Um, thank you. Um, Mr. Stimmel, um, could I, could I ask you to speak to the kind of the commitment of the Parking Authority? In the sense, with, could they find a solution for this if they were allowed parking on the street?
I think maybe Mr. McCann might have a better chance of being able to answer that question, Mr. Caulfield, I think.
Hold on one second to that. Okay, go ahead, Mr. McCann.
Sure, uh, Mr. Caulfield, so as I mentioned before, uh, my superintendent, who has passed on, was the one that went to the Parking Authority to get the, uh, spots on Prospect. And, and we wanted them all, and they said, we will grant you five, and you go on a waiting list. And as I mentioned, we've been on a waiting list for, I sort of lost track, eight to ten years now. Um, we have indirectly suggested about parking on Claremont Avenue. And although, although nothing formal, we have basically been told that's probably not going to happen. So we kind of dropped it, just to be quite honest with you.
Mr. McCann, if, if, if the town had, if, if the parking utility was able to work with you, do you think you would be able to find enough parking on the street to, to, to help you in this crisis? To 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 help you in this crisis?
Yes and no, and the reason I say that is because right now we have five uh, tenants that we pay for in the parking on Prospect. The problem comes up when there's snow and ice conditions and that that hill, we have seen numerous, numerous accidents. So we take the proactive approach and we find spots for tenants. Um, not an easy task at all, and they're not happy about it, quite quite honestly, so. Not impossible, but if I found, for example, ten spots on Prospect, I have to find ten. Parking spots when it's snowing or sleeting and that, not impossible, yet challenging. Uh, because I just don't want to leave my tenants out, uh, lurch and just say, quote-unquote, figure it out. It that's, we just don't run our business that way.
I I think you should add to your caveat of business is also like parking ballet as well. You seem to be moving a lot of cars around. Uh, how how are the neighbors uh, across the street and do they, are they, do they feel about, do they feel about this crisis for you and? Are they supportive of the idea or they know what's happening in that hour and that way?
I haven't spoken to all all the neighbors, so one or two I've spoken to in passing. And they say, you're seem like you're trying to combat the 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 parking situation in Montclair. And I, one taxi guy said to me, I applaud you for not adding to it by parking on the street. Um, and I said that, uh, as we mentioned before, I said, we're trying to fix it and I'm not going to do anything particularly right now. I know it doesn't look great. But if we were to get approval, we would be putting up shrubbery, so it would look significantly better. So I basically asked them to kind of bear with us.
Okay.
So, yeah, to answer your question, I I think they they agree with us.
Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
Mister Stimel, I have a number of questions. I I guess let me do my helpful question. Um, you know, I look at the site and the what, um. You know, what you've marked is a forty-one inch oak. If that tree remains, there's effectively no way to get from the existing parking area. To the area behind three seventy-eight, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, that'd be less helpful, um. Yes, um, and you you know, I, Mister Gassillon said, I guess it was part of your justification. Um, this property being unique, but there are a number of other apartment buildings that were built. Roughly the same time period along going down Claremont Avenue and elsewhere in town. Have you looked at any of those as to what their um, existing parking situation is?
In a general sense, I I'm aware that there are other similar buildings on on Claremont and around Montclair, but no, I did not do. Parking counts at any of those properties.
Okay, so, you know, if if there are other buildings, um, that are also. Within adequate parking, I mean, one building that we we dealt with, um, is the corner of Claremont and the. Northeast corner of Claremont and North Fullerton. You know, which has minimal parking, um, if. Why wouldn't this set a precedent for? Those buildings that have inadequate parking to come in and advocate for their getting front yard parking?
Mister Harrison, you're an expert in this field. You're a land use attorney. You know, each case stands on its own. And this, I won't go into an argument now, this is a very unique location. I know you know, uh, Montclair inside and out, but I live in this area, I'm familiar with it. This might be the worst one.
And I'm asking your expert as to whether he looked at other buildings. To determine whether this building is in fact unique or whether there are other buildings that have similar situations.
Well, he can answer the question. My point was.
Let let him answer the question. You can do your summation.
Add time to my summation, I understand. Mister Stimel, please answer the question if you can.
Yes, uh, M- Mister Gassillon took some of what I was gonna say, but I would just add that, uh, you know, in addition to a- as he noted. Uh, every application rises and falls on its own merits, which we've all heard a thousand times. I I. I did vote, I I did uh, focus on the particular characteristics of this site. Um, a- as it relates to the parking issue and specifically providing the uh, rear yard parking. To address the concerns of the board members. I know it came up at the Development Review Committee. At that time, uh, the chairman had. Suggested that we contact the Planning Department. To talk about other applications which had been approved for front yard parking and really there there was not anything that was a. Uh, direct comparable, uh, but you know, we we acknowledge the board's reluctance to do this. Uh, we understand the aesthetic concerns, the the general feeling of clutter, the the visual appearance of it. But we believe that the benefit in providing the additional parking here is significant. And you know, it it's uh, it it exceeds the negative impacts associated with the. The visual considerations in addition to the fact that the site is. Uh, difficult in its characteristics to to provide adequate parking because of the topography, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, oh. Okay, so you you have not looked at other. Front yard parking applications that this board is considered, is that correct?
Uh, I I looked at one other application which was approved for front yard parking. Uh, I I spoke to the Planning Department as the chairman had requested. At the DRC, they forwarded one application for a commercial property at Walnut Street and uh. Uh, Grove, I believe it is, across from the the baseball field. Um, and the the circumstances there were a little bit different. It was a full redevelopment of the property, the the front yard parking was. Approved to bring the site more in compliance with the uh, ordinance requirements for parking. There was some consideration to the fact that the site. Uh, had previously been uh, auto body or auto repair and was aesthetically not. Not the most pleasant to look at, and then there was also a provision of uh. I want to say a a four-foot decorative brick wall in the front of the property. Uh, so, you know, in in addition to probably other things that were considered in the deliberation, that was part of the board's consideration for that application.
Then I want to go back to what some other board members asked about in terms of. The safety of the screening you're proposing in terms of cars. Pulling into the driveway while cars are backing out of the the proposed parking spaces as to. You know, at what point is someone going to see that there's a problem before there's an accident?
Well, I think because of the the fact that you've got that slope, as soon as you enter the property, I think you're gonna need to. Slow down to five miles an hour to make that turn into the site. Uh, so I think you're gonna be able to see the car backing out of the space possibly as or before they see you, so. You know, there's there's responsibility on both parties to uh, to to keep an eye on what they're doing.
But the landscaping and proposing will be taller than the car windows, is that correct?
That is uh, correct. Uh, the idea, obviously, to screen the cars, the the landscaping needs to be taller than the cars, but that's why. I cut off the landscaping halfway back in the parking spaces.
Mister Gassillon, this is your last witness.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, Mister Fleischer.
I I I missed it the first time, I apologize. Next to the retaining wall. How do you open the door to that car? The car that's next to you, how how do you open the doors of that car? Um, at all, there's no space at all to literally open a door. That's one kind of question, because you have that on the other side, even with the two and a half foot retaining wall. My other question is, what is the cross slope on these parking spaces? Because I believe. That as I see this slope, and maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. To try to open a door on what I would call the uphill side of that car is going to take almost superhuman strength. As opposed to the downhill side of the car where it's just gonna fly open into whatever's next to it. That's a very, very steep side slope that would not be normally permitted under. Any codes in terms of side slopes for a parking area. Am am I correct or incorrect on that?
Well, the two questions there, the the first one about the retaining wall, the retaining wall at the north. East corner of the parking area is above the surrounding area, so if you're on the interior of the site. Uh, or the interior of the parking area, uh, you you'd be able to open it, open your door just as you would open your door over a curb. Uh, the retaining wall at the opposite corner, at the southwest corner of the parking area. You would have some of that concern about having adequate width to uh, open the door in that location. So that would be one of those spots where you'd need to put somebody with uh, with a smaller car. As far as the grade of the parking area, that does obviously exceed what is traditional. Typically, you hear that once you get beyond, um. Let's say a six percent slope, i- it uh, becomes more difficult to open the door, so uh, you know, in this case, you're you're at about. Ten percent, but that matches the grade of the uh, of the existing driveway where, you know, fortunately or unfortunately. Uh, unfortunately, from the board's point of view, there there are people parking there right now. Um, and I I think, uh, if you spoke to Mister McCann, he would probably tell you that the residents would make the trade-off for the grading issue. Uh, in exchange for having six additional parking spaces. I had, uh, that that's the same grade essentially that's on uh, Prospect as well, and and I had. Mentioned this before, but some of the issues with the grading are related to the fact that we're tied to meet the grading at the property line. And then also at the rear of the building where the existing garages are located, so there's not. Much that can be done about the slope as it goes through that area.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, I'm not so sure that's technically a workable position for a parking space. And when I look at it, I've never seen frankly, three cars in on that. On that westerly side ever, in all the times I've gone there, and that's a steep slope to open. If you front into this space. That is an impossible situation to open a door at the slope you're talking about. Prospect is a whole different story. Prospect, you're not opening the door. As a cross slope, you're opening the door that you're on a soap road. This is a a cross slope. And I'm not even sure you're permitted to have a parking area on a six percent cross slope across the slope. Let alone something greater than six percent. I'm pretty sure that the salt issue is limited to three percent cross slope in a parking area.
I believe that issue was identified as an issue in the engineer's report, which Mister Stimel, I don't think you've addressed the. The questions in the engineer's report.
This would be the uh, November tenth letter?
That's correct.
Sure, uh, if the board would like me to run through that, I can do that. The the first technical comment relates to existing non-conformity variances, uh, we and defers to the planners' office. For the variance relief required. I think we we talked about those variances, other than anything that might come up in the review of the additional comments. Talks about, the second comment is about design waivers for off-street parking setbacks, which we spoke about. Uh, the third comment is about the parking dimensions where we propose nine by eighteen, nine by nineteen is required, we spoke to that. Uh, four is the fourteen point six five foot parking aisle, we spoke about that. Comment number five is to provide a concrete sidewalk detail, we will comply. Uh, comment six is, uh, uh, applicant is proposing a keystone wall. If the wall is more than four foot high, calculation shall be provided. Uh, if uh, if this application is approved, we would provide those as a condition subject to uh, the board's consideration. Comment number seven relates to the ADA accessible routes and conformance with ADA standards for accessible design. Provided by the Department of Justice. Now, the, as we've said many times in the course of this application, these are all existing buildings. There's no changes proposed to the buildings, to the building entrances, or to the units themselves. It would be uh, feasible feasibly possible to provide an ADA compliant route. From the handicap parking space to the side entrance of the middle building. That that's perfect, right? Sorry, so from the handicap parking space to the side of building three seventy-eight, we could come uh, provide a handicap route. In that area, uh, we're not changing any of the primary function areas of any of the buildings, um, you know, we're. We're trying to remove a barrier to accessibility and that there's no handicap parking space provided. I don't think it was something that was considered in nineteen forty-seven. So to that extent, we have addressed it. Uh, if the intention of the comment is to provide an accessible route to all of the building entrances. It's beyond the scope of what this project is, a- and again, none of the units are accessible, none of the entrances are accessible. Uh, comment number eight relates to the parking spaces, uh, the grade of the parking spaces. Uh, which shall not be in excess of six percent. Obviously, the the spaces by the entrances are greater than six percent, uh, it's an existing. Non-conformity because it's following the grade of the driveway in that location, um, so to the extent necessary, we would ask for a waiver for that. Uh, comment number nine is somewhat related. Driveway shall have a minimum width of ten feet, which we comply with, and a maximum gradient of ten percent. Within twenty feet of the property line. Uh, again, the slope of the driveway is about fifteen percent. Uh, which is an existing non-conformity, so uh, we're asking for a waiver to maintain that. Uh, because of the the configuration of the site, there's no way to reduce that slope in that area. Comments eleven, twelve, and thirteen all relate to stormwater runoff. Uh, we had said that there's a net increase of. Eleven hundred square feet of impervious coverage on the subject property. And just to be clear, that's eleven hundred square feet from what had been previously existing to now. It doesn't take into account the existing gravel parking areas, uh, so eleven hundred square feet. Uh, and there, uh, the request is for, um. Two gallons of stormwater shall be managed using green infrastructure practices. Uh, because of the slope of the property, the the location of where the new impervious coverage is being added. And the existing landscaping on the site, it would be difficult to provide green infrastructure improvements. That are downhill of that additional pavement. We would be open to providing some kind of uh, stormwater improvement, probably makes sense. With this site to do something like a seepage pit that captures runoff from one of the the buildings. Uh, to to offset the increase in additional coverage, but I think. Certainly, if the board uh, is is uh, open to approving the application, we could resolve that with uh, cooperation with the board engineer. Uh, comment number fourteen relates to Soil Conservation District. Uh, we're required to file for soil conservation if we're over. Five thousand squ- square feet of disturbance. We're at about twenty-five hundred square feet as the plan is now, so we're well below that threshold. So I think, um, you know, those were all the comments from from Mister Chandler.
Okay, can you go through again, because I couldn't write quick enough as to which of those conditions you're willing to adhere to? I had.
Sure, so. One, I believe, has been addressed, a- and this is subject to the board's decision on any variances or waivers. One has been addressed. Uh, two has been addressed, three has been addressed. Four has been addressed, five, we will comply. Six, we will comply. Uh, seven, we can provide an accessible path to the side entrance of building three seventy-eight.
Can I see item eight on the uh, chart? The next item up? The next item down? Tommy, can you move? The display up? Thank you. But I, I, I just want to read that.
I think I think there's, there might be a a mistake in item number eight, because I think that the six percent slope is. For the new spaces that were created as part of this ex- expansion of the parking in the front yard.
I believe that is the case, but this is talking about. Not having a grade in excess of six percent. I'm talking about a. not having a grade in excess of 6%. I'm talking about a cross slope, which was the question I asked originally. I know of no parking lot that has a cross slope of 10% perpendicular to the way the car parks. None anywhere. And if you've seen it, I'd like to know about it, but I've never seen a parking area with a cross slope of 10%. I've certainly seen on steep streets when there's parallel parking, people might, you know, they turn their wheels into the curb and they park there. But that's in the direction of movement of the vehicle. I've never seen a parking area designed with a 6% within a cross slope of this magnitude in my entire professional life. And I've been doing, I've been in this business a very, very long time. And I want to know if you've ever designed a parking area with a cross slope with 10%.
I can tell you, I have never designed a parking area with a cross slope of 10%, but I don't think I've ever run into this combination of circumstances associated with the site on a project that I've been involved with. I'm going to say two things about that, one of which I already said is that unfortunately, because the applicant did this without permits, those parking spaces are existing and operating with essentially that cross slope. The other thing is that Mr. Fleischer, you had suggested, and I don't know that the other board members would be open to this, but extending those parking spaces further out from the central aisle so that the cars when parked are fully behind the landscaping, but as they back out, they're still visible to the motorists pulling in off of Clermont. The further you move, the further you move those spaces away from the aisle, the more flexibility you have to tweak that grading a little bit. So you probably could bring that down somewhat as you pull the spaces away from the central aisle. You'd still need to meet the grade of the aisle because if you, if you created a flat area in the middle of that driveway to accommodate those parking spaces, then the grade would get steeper on both sides of the parking area. So I think, you know, if, if, if we were to revise the plans based on your suggestion to slide the parking spaces out from the aisle, we could, we could bring that grade down somewhat.
Chairman?
I'm literally, I'm literally concerned, I'm literally concerned about the safety of the cross slope for these parking spaces. That's what I'm concerned about.
Mr. Fleischer, I understand your concern. Mr. Chairman, can I have a two-minute recess to call my client? Obviously, with the Zoom situation, I don't have the same flexibility. I just like to talk to my client for two minutes. If that's possible.
Okay. Why don't we take a five-minute break? Cause we need to take a break anyway and give you a chance to talk to your client. And then we will need to take a break before we do Mr. Vettery's application.
Thank you. I'll be done in the five-minute period.
Okay. So we'll resume at 10:55.
Mr. Harris, are we definitely going to do this next application or are we going to postpone it?
I mean, we've postponed them.
Yeah, I may ask for an adjournment, so you might want to.
Okay. What, yeah, let's wait and then Mr. Vettery will, based on what Mr. Gassillon decides, will decide what you want to do.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing the time for recess. When reviewing the engineer's letter with my engineer prior to the meeting, we discussed that issue that Mr. Fleischer has raised. And my engineer thought it had functioned that way for a year or two and thought it would work. However, based on Mr. Fleischer's concern, I'd like to ask for an adjournment so that my engineer can further consider that issue of the opening and closing of the door of the car on that. I'm not alleging the slope is 10%, but it was said to be a 10% slope. So that particular issue concerns my client and myself and my engineer. Although we, we had talked about it and thought because it had been used that way for a year and a half or whatever time period it was that it would work. But again, the validity of how it was raised by Mr. Fleischer raises a concern that we'd like to address.
Okay. Just one other thing, just so, you know, I'd like the engineer to also look at the board engineer's stormwater comments. I, you know, this, any stormwater from this property is running downhill and potentially affecting. And, you know, part of the goal of the new stormwater regulations was both to improve water quality and to better control runoff from what the previous regulation. So either, we either have a longer discussion as to why he doesn't feel it's appropriate to do on the site or he'll come back and say he'll comply with those recommendations.
Mr. Harris, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I'd like, if it's possible for the engineer to look at, in a sense, you have your main drive, a turnoff, and then cars that park north-south, maybe four cars on each side of the driveway, north-south, where there's a lot more room behind it for both screening and the cars are facing away from the street. Now, that's a fair amount of topography and I can't do the analysis in my head. But I'm not, if, if, if the engineer may or may not understand what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Mr. Stimel, do you understand the point being made by Mr. Fleischer?
In other words, if you came up that driveway and you could make a right turn into a little parking lot and a left turn into a little parking lot and get it tighter up against the buildings. And then literally park after you've made the left turn, park up or down the hill as opposed to cross slope.
So turn off the driveway into a parking area and then park either facing the street or facing the building.
And do that on both sides to spread it out a little bit that way. And not, and then you'd have a lot more room for both screening as well as to eliminate this significant cross slope issue that you're dealing with.
We can.
Cause I can't analyze it. I'm suggesting you might want to look at something like that.
Yeah, we could take a look at it. The other thought I had was, no, no, never mind. That wouldn't work. Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Also, the number five.
Thank you for your thoughts. Mr. Chairman, thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk it over. And again, I'd see an adjournment to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board and obviously ask that that adjournment be granted without further notice.
Okay. And you agree if we need an extension to give us an extension?
I do.
Okay. So the next meeting of the board is January 12th. It'll be another virtual meeting. Notice of how to access the meeting will be on the township website. There'll be no further notice provided. Let me just ask, are there any, I don't believe there are any members of the public who are here for this application, but Tommy, can you unmute everyone and confirm that? And we have to get Mr. Vettery and his witnesses here anyway. So are there any members of the public who are here for this application? So this matter is being continued until January 12th without further notice. There'll be a virtual meeting and access will be on the township website as to how to access the meeting. 7:30 here.
Thank you.
See you then, Mr. Gassillon.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Mr. Vettery, how long do you think your application will take?
All right, give me one second. Let me put him on the panelists. All right, he's, he's a panelist now. And let me know if there's anybody else that needs to be added.
I think it's the remaining attendees belong to this application.
Malgozada and Adam? Lozota?
Yes.
All right, we'll add them both. All right. Everyone's a panelist now.
John, are you present?
Mr. Vettery, you've got, you're muted. You need to unmute yourself, please.
Can you hear me? Sorry about that.
Now we can.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. You missed a great speech. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for agreeing to hear us at this late hour. Appreciate all of your volunteer.
First, you're asking my question as to how long you're going to take. Do you think three hours? We are not hearing you.
We do not expect it to take anywhere near that time. We have one witness who is the architect. Ms. Dolgan is available to answer questions tonight and I will, I promise to be very brief.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Vettery, on behalf of the 13 Wheeler Trust.
Too quick. I'm too quick. I should announce what we're doing.
Sure.
The next application is that of Michelle Dolgan, trustee for the property located 13 Wheeler Street, block 4,105, lots 13 and 14. This is an application to build two two-family homes, one on each lot. Lots are in the R2, two families own, but two lots are undersized and do not meet minimum lot size. Variances are, waivers are requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45B, which requires a front yard setback of 25 feet and both buildings are set back six feet. A variance is required from Montclair Code Section 347-45C1, which requires a side yard setback of six feet on one side and 10 feet on the other side. The proposed side yard setbacks are 3.5 and 5.5 feet. A variance is required from Montclair Code Section 347-52 that states that accessory structures must be set back at least six feet from the side and rear property line in the proposed storage areas for the air-conditioned units is zero feet from the property line. A variance is required from Montclair Code Section 347-102B, which requires that each parking space for one and two family dwellings measure measure nine feet by 19 feet and the proposed parking space are only eight feet by 18 feet. A variance is required from Montclair Code Section 347-104, which requires that all off-site street parking will be set back a minimum of four feet from property lines. The intervening space appropriately landscaped, the proposed parking area is set back only 1.5 feet and is not landscaped. A variance is required from Montclair Code Section 347-104, which requires that all driveways be set back a minimum of one foot from the property line and the proposed common driveway has no setback. A variance is required from Montclair Building Coverage of 35.3% for lot 13 and 35.9% for lot 14. Or else 25% is the maximum building coverage and relief from the New Jersey residential site improvement standards is required as two parking spaces are required for each unit. Creating a need for eight parking spaces and only four parking spaces are required. Is, are the taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Yes, yes, they are.
Okay, proceed.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you for hearing the application. John Vettery, on behalf of the applicant, the 13 Wheeler Trust, Michelle Dolgan, trustee. We appeared before the HPC on August 26th and provided sufficient evidence to that board to allow for the property at 13 Wheeler, the two-family existing home to be demolished. We later appeared on October 28th before the HPC had good discussions with them and their planner and their consultant. And as a result of that, made modifications to the plan. The HPC seemed happy with the revised plans. The two families are permitted in the R2 zone and we took into consideration the enhancements that they suggested to us and put through that to the plans. I'd like to get. Um, I'd like to get, given the hour, uh, started with Mr. Lozota. He is our only witness this evening, and he'll be testifying with respect to the architecture of this site.
Mr. Lozota, are you present?
Yes, sir.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes.
State your name and address.
Yes, Adam Lozota, address is 1355 East Susquehanna Avenue in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, zip code 19125.
Thank you. Good evening, almost good morning, Adam. Uh, please give the board the benefit of your educational and professional experience, and I know you have appeared before this board several times before.
Yes, I have. Great to see everyone back. Thank you so much for sticking with us at this late hour. I graduated from, uh, New Jersey Institute of, uh, Institute of Technology, uh, with a professional bachelor's degree in architecture in 2012. I have whole, I currently hold in good standing architectural licenses in the states of New Jersey and in Pennsylvania.
Do we accept them?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Adam, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, John. Thank you to the board for sticking with us so late. So I don't want to hold you. I think, uh, let's kind of dive right in. So we can see here 13 to 15 Wheeler on the drawings here, and I just want to make sure that, yes, these are the latest ones, uh, that John had spoken about, that we had made modifications to, uh, that differ from the earlier application, uh, with respect to the changes that the historic board was looking for. So you see on the left here, 13, and then on the right, 15. Uh, the one on the left is, uh, they're mirror images of each other, um, in terms of floor plan and in design. The left one, uh, is similar, and it gives some kind of design cues from what was earlier there, uh, with the blue siding, uh, with the prominent gable at the front. Um, and also takes some Greek revival architectural notes that were, uh, that were really important to the historic board. And also, you can see there at the foundation that is exposed at the front porch, we're actually saving, uh, some of that original old, uh, river stone, actual stonework and using it as a cladding, because honestly, unfortunately, that was the only piece that we could save, uh, historically of that existing property. Unfortunately, it has gone through complete deterioration, and like the historic board approved of that total demolition. But we are trying to somehow keep that character, at least what character was able to be left, uh, with that front of 13 Wheeler. And of course, 15 Wheeler is a mirror image of it before they looked identical, and we took the historic board's recommendations and changed it. So especially you see here, it's a different color, it's a different orientation of windows, still has, uh, has the overall same shape in order for it to kind of, you know, matchbook that shared driveway in the middle. But it has a difference also in terms of the adornment of the front porch, and also it has the different kind of hip roof at that front porch, which is actually very, uh, common up and down, uh, 13 Wheeler. So, uh, if you can, uh, Tommy, go on to the next page for me, please. Perfect, thank you. So you see here the existing site plan on the left there, uh, and also the architectural site plan on the right. If you could zoom in on that architectural site plan on the right there for me. Zoom out a little bit so we can see the whole thing there. Uh, perfect. Yep, there we go. So, uh, here, similar to what we have presented to the board in the past, uh, we're providing these two proposed two-and-a-half-story frame dwelling, two-family residences. Um, they are split by, uh, having one unit at the front, one unit at the back, and also with a shared driveway down the middle. Uh, and by doing that, we were only able to fit four parking spaces in the rear. I know some of the kind of planning considerations, uh, for the parking area in the back. Uh, one, we, you know, we fit the eight by 18, which is that, uh, minimum size that is allowable in the zoning ordinance. Uh, we do provide four parking spaces. We're trying to keep that one-to-one minimum. I know it's not RSIS standards, but it's something that we've always tried to do with all of our projects, which we are presenting here again. Um, and also, we're providing that 24-foot, uh, backup space in order for cars to be able to go up and down that shared driveway going forward. No one's going backwards down that, you know, long driveway. Uh, also, and, and also to the HVAC equipment, um, one of the things that we wanted to show here is that it's just, maybe just less than an inch shy of eight feet from where the, um, AC units are be, are from the side property line. So what you're seeing there, but, you know, behind the back staircase, you're seeing, uh, you know, four trashcans, two, uh, two trash and two recycling, uh, one for each unit, and then the four AC units. And then, of course, it's bookmarked on the other side as well.
So, Adam, that, that was called out as a variance early on based on an earlier plan, so that's no longer a variance.
That is no longer a variance, no.
Thank you.
Uh, one of the other considerations too was the, um, you know, requiring the four-foot setback from the property line of the parking areas. Um, we, we do get that on the one side there near the 24-foot turnaround, but unfortunately, it, we, we can't accommodate that four-foot setback on the, you know, just looking at here on the planned right-hand side, we're only having that foot and a half setback. You know, and unfortunately, just with the way that the, it's either we get that one foot five on the one side, or maybe potentially flipping it, but we're always going to have at least one variance for the one side for the less than four feet for the parking stalls. Uh, and then finally, you know, uh, with the orientation of the buildings, similar to what we've proposed in the past, we want to do that three-and-a-half-foot walkway on both sides, mainly because we don't want people walking up and down that driveway. We do want to keep the pedestrian walking, um, as far away from the driveway as possible, and also for, of course, carrying, uh, the trash, and also for accessing, uh, the entrances to the back two units at respectively each 13 and 15 Wheeler. So, uh, Tommy, can you go around to the next page for me? Kind of go through the houses and how each of them, uh, you know, how, how they look into, um, architecturally. So, similar to what we've done in the past again, uh, you'll see here on the left-hand side, the proposed, uh, finished basement plans. Again, it's just extra open, uh, recreational and additional family room space, uh, no bedrooms down there. Um, and of course, a bathroom and a utility room. Again, they're bookmarked, uh, mirror images of each other in terms of the interior layout. Uh, on the first floor, you open into an open floor space with an open living room and, and large kitchen space, with the staircases stacked on top of each other. Uh, that's for both units. Uh, Tommy, if you can go to the next page for me. Here on the second floor plan, again, we're doing two, two bedrooms with a shared hall bathroom for those second floor plans, uh, respectively for all four units, you know, two and two. And then finally, on the attic space, we are showing the, uh, we are showing a, the master suite, which has its own bathroom and also its own closet in that finished attic space. We did make sure to, uh, accommodate for the fact that we are not exceeding the 50-foot, oh, sorry, the 50% uh, dormers a, along those side elevations for both 13 and 15 Wheeler. As we go to the next page for you, please. Tommy, if you can go to the next page for me? Oop.
Are you looking for these elevations, or do you want to?
Yeah, yeah, next page, yep. Oop, not seeing it move.
Maybe it's frozen on your end. I'm showing the front and rear.
Oh, it was frozen, yeah, it was frozen on my end. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, but wasn't seeing it. Thank you. Uh, you can see here on the left-hand side, the front elevation, which is facing Wheeler, uh, Street. Wait, you see here the left one, which just has that blue color. Again, the different colors always show weird when we're doing online and everyone's computer is set differently. The left-hand side has that Boob Bay blue, and the right-hand side has the Monterey Taupe, two complementary colors. The Booth Bay blue is really that color that we're kind of, um, getting from, you know, the inspiration of what the existing home was, was like a lighter blue color. And the right-hand side is just a complementary, but different color to help differentiate the two houses. Um, and, but the back elevation is the same, uh, but the only difference is of the color, because we want that same color to wrap all the way around. The only, the one similarity between the two is that the dormers above have a, just a standard white-colored siding. Again, we're all, we're showing here a hardy plank siding, and one of the considerations from the, um, Historic Preservation Committee was to make sure that, uh, you know, the two houses should not be exactly the same. Uh, and we want to make sure that those porch and trim elements are AZAC and are hardier material. And of course, especially here at the front elevation, we want to make sure that the left-hand side one was the standing seam metal roof to match its neighbor at 11. But then, of course, 15 Wheeler has the hip roof with shingles to differentiate itself and to match more with all the other houses going along Wheeler Street. Uh, if you go to the next page for me, Tommy, please, we'll go to the, uh, side elevations. Again, I'm only showing the one side here, uh, the driveway elevation. It's the same on the other side, just a different color. Uh, so here, you're just seeing, again, the windows, uh, for all the different elements. The encasement windows at the kitchens, everywhere else has, uh, double-hung windows to be kind of within that period, uh, period style. And also here, we're just showing down sconces. It's going to be on both sides to illuminate down on the driveway. And then, if you go to the next page for me, please, Tommy, of the other side elevations, these are going to be the side elevations along the walkways. So again, same concept here, all double-hung windows, uh, providing some natural light to the spaces, and of course, those downlight sconces to provide lighting along the walkways. Uh, finally, go to the next page for me, please, into the sections, just showing the sectional qualities and the different, um, heights that we're getting. And of course, the section through kind of the master, uh, bathrooms there, uh, under the gables. And of course, where we're doing it at the dormers, just to give you kind of a sense of the sectional quality of these homes. And then the last page too, just showing you the cross-section through them with the staircases and the headrooms and kind of how all that looks. So that's kind of my consideration. The only thing I want to wrap up on was, you know, I kind of spoke and alluded to in the elevations. The only thing I did not mention, uh, was we made sure to, um, hit that point number two in the HPC, which is the key, the faux keystones in the windowheads to remove those, uh, which we have also in the elevations. So that wraps up my presentation of the project.
Thanks, Adam. Just a couple of things. So with respect to, um, with respect to the existing setback on the home, the, the existing home, just, uh, point that out, what the existing setback is.
Yeah, so if you, uh, Tommy, if you go to that second page with the architectural site plan on the right-hand side, and actually zoom out to the whole page, let's see that whole page with the two, with the existing survey and also the architectural site plan. Yep, that one. Perfect. So you can see on the existing, just keep it all zoomed out for now. So on the left-hand side there, you can see how the existing home and the existing front porch almost line up with 11 Wheeler, which is just, you know, in that, uh, plan north, which is, uh, just to the northeast of 13 Wheeler, was that 11 Wheeler? So that front setback, we wanted to maintain that because not only is 11 Wheeler that close, but all, all, all the properties, especially immediately adjacent, 11 and also going, you know, 11, 9, and all the way down to the corner at Woodland, all of the houses are much closer. So in order to continue the urban fabric, we wanted to just maintain that same, uh, front setback, which we're proposing. Okay, you see here in the architectural site plan, and thus with 13, 13 Wheeler doing it, we want to make sure that 15 Wheeler also follows those same front setbacks.
And the, uh, I think it's a shed or a dog run and a large garage, those are proposed to be demolished as well with the home?
Yes, so everything, uh, that, yeah, we're doing a full total demolition, and everything else across the site is going to be completely demoed. Uh, unfortunately, that back garage is in even worse shape, with the whole roof, I think, has already collapsed, and it's, it needs to-
And the, uh, the regarding, uh, comment four in the planning consideration, I think you hit all of them, and the applicant will work with the town arborist to put appropriate street trees. I think the only reason we didn't show them in the elevation was because it just blocked the house.
Yes, if you go, yes, you see here in the point number four, the existing mature street tree. Unfortunately, that street tree is in, it is dying. Unfortunately, the interior, uh, core of the trunk is, is getting carved out and rotted out, and it's, it's in rough shape. So honestly, it's more of a hazard than anything else. Uh, you can see here, if you go back to my drawings on the front page rendering, you're only seeing the one street tree on the right. Um, I didn't show the new one because it would block the view, but you can see here on the architectural site plan, which he has up on the screen, we are proposing two new street trees, uh, kind of almost in line, i- in line between that little greenery, between the front staircase and that, uh, walkways on both ends.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Lozota. I have no further questions.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
One question, can we go to the front and rear elevations? And I'm smiling as I ask the question, in case the architect's, uh, wondering. But I'd like to see those elevations.
Sure.
Okay, I, I look at the front elevation, and you've made that kind of distinction between the standing seam roof and the little hip roof, right? So I say to myself, why isn't he doing it on the back, making that same little distinction? And putting the same kind of hip roof that matches the front on the back of the, I guess, the taupe-looking house.
I, is it-
And I, and I'm smiling at one point, but at the same point with the notion that if you want to make them look different, make them look di- different consistently, and it's just as easy to put a little hip in the back as it is to put the hip in the front. So that's why I asked the question.
Uh, architecturally, because of how small that roof is, and I can't do a roof all the way across, otherwise I, I wouldn't make the staircase able to work. We could potentially do a little hip roof, but then again, it would be so small, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't look like a hip roof. It'd look like another gable. Um, so that, I, I'd go against that. Materialistically, we could potentially change that standing seam metal and make it a condition and make it, uh, make the shed roof on the rear entry of the, of 15 Wheeler. We can make that be shingle instead of standing seam metal. If that, if, if you want, if that, if that's a condition that the board would, would, you know, approve the project as a condition, I, we'd be happy to accommodate that.
I would never make that a condition. I just gave it to you for your consideration.
Yeah, I, I-
I'll leave it at that. I have no further questions.
Okay, Mr. McCollough, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, looking at the, the rear, um, units.
Hmm.
Um, contrast to the front, uh, where the stairwell, um, provides protect, protection uh, for pedestrians from the driveway. Uh, in the rear, that's not the case. Those, those back stairways lead right into the driveway. Um, and I wonder if, you know, is, is it possible to, to reverse those, um, so that, um, you know, because I'm concerned about children, you know, uh, running down those steps and there's a vehicle coming and, you know, they're, they're caught off guard and that kind of thing. Is, is there a way to, to change that?
Architecturally, no, because unfortunately, the door opens in line with the staircase, and it, it would, it would completely destroy the flow of that whole first floor plan. But also, the staircase is leading down to an over-three-foot area for them to turn and walk around. So it's not like you're going down the staircase and, and immediately walking onto the driveway. There is that buffer space between, uh, so this way, if you walk down the staircase, you just turn around and walk onto the sidewalk. So I understand the concern, but we did factor in enough of that buffer, um, and that's why that rear porch is a lot smaller, doesn't span across the entire, uh, you know, across the entire facade like it does at the front.
Okay, you know, I just-
Yeah, it's, it, you do walk down the staircase, but there's still plenty of room between, you know, once you step off that last step and then onto the driveway. You got a couple of steps there. So even if someone say were to trip and go down the stairs, it's not like you're going to land into the driveway in a, in a way of harm.
Fine, that's, that's my biggest question.
Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore, do you have any questions? No questions. Mr. Simon, do you have any questions?
Uh, just one. All, all the parking spaces are on lot 13. So I'm, I'm assuming there's some kind of agreement between, uh, for, that will follow, um, I guess, the ownership, that they would also access between the two properties?
Yeah, Adam, I'll take this one. Yes, as we've had on other properties, we will have a, a cross easement that we've done, um, on other properties that will be reported and become a matter of public record.
And is there any lighting in the, the shared driveway, the length?
Yeah, let me take this one. So on both the exterior walls, there are down sconces on both 13 and 15 Wheeler illuminating the driveway.
Uh, just one or like along the whole path? I don't, I didn't, I didn't notice on the-
Uh, there's, yeah, on the, on the elevations, there's going to be three lights on each side. So you're gonna have a total of six downlights along that whole corridor of that driveway.
And what about on the other side with the, where the, the walkway?
Yeah, so each, each of them, each of them are going to get three, kind of one in the middle, and then two equidistant between the middle and the edge there. So this way, you'll have plenty of illumination and foot candles along the side, uh, on the sidewalkways and also down that middle driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Harris, do you have any questions?
Um, yes. Uh, first one, is there any way to reconfigure the location of the trash enclosure so that they're on the grass area, um, so that their, the ACs can be moved over, uh, from the property line?
Uh, the, currently, the ACs are pat, you know, they, they do meet the requirements. Uh, but the reason why we're trying to avoid moving the trashcans into that grass area is because we're trying to avoid people walking onto the driveway, uh, with their trash. I think that we, we prefer that every, you know, the driveway and the vehicles be completely separated, as separate as best we can, uh, from pedestrian walkway and pedestrian uses such as, you know, walking there and of course, you know, rolling the trashcans down onto the street.
Mr. Lozota, I need to correct you. Um, our ordinance require, considers the trash enclosures as an accessory structure, and the accessory structure must meet the setback of six feet in zoning ordinance.
Because we're fencing in the- Because we're fencing in the area, it's considered a trap, it's considered a accessory structure?
Well, you're it's your your enclosure, your trash, I mean, you you're showing these as trash enclosures. If that's the accessory structure, the accessory structure must be set back six feet. Um and also, if you can um tell us how the the height of the fence too, because I don't believe it's in your plan.
Uh we do propose a height of six feet for the fence.
And where does that start?
Uh so we're not proposing a trash enclosure. We're just trying to, we're providing a fence to go around the. Uh you know, fenced in area with gates for the AC units and the trash cans. So you can see here, you see the little square uh symbols there. So those are gonna be the posts uh for the fencing to help screen. The tra- you know, for the trash cans and also for the AC units. And then from there, the uh along the greenery or along the sides and the back of the property will be showing a six foot fence.
So it's behind the this six foot fence is behind the 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 trash areas. It's not in front. There's no fencing in front?
Uh those are all just gates in front.
No, no, be but between the trash enclosed, the trash enclosed areas and the. The front of the property, running along the side property line, along the side of the building. There's no fence there.
No.
And there's no fence on the other side?
No.
Okay.
Um and so if if they're just, if the trash enclosures are just fenced in with the door or the trash areas are just fenced in with the doors.
Yeah, with just gates, yeah.
Does that, Janice, does that constitute an enclosure or?
I I think I think we can let that go because um a trash enclosure by our ordinance must have a roof and a structure must have a roof. So if there's gonna be no, there's no roof on top uh a- around these trash enclosures, it's just the the fence, right?
Yes, it's just to help screen them. There's gonna be no roof above them, especially because. Uh with with the AC units, we can't have a roof over them. They they need the air to breathe in order to work properly.
Is there gonna be a concrete pad or?
It's all all those are going to sit on the concrete uh walkways and, you know, the concrete pavement.
Okay.
Um and then I'm just curious as to, and I know we've seen it before, but I I still don't really understand why um. What the reason is, but these back to back units where one unit, you know, they're basically has an inferior entrance. You know, they've got to walk down an alley to get to their opening and then their to their uh front door and. You know, they're greeted by trash cans and AC units. Um. Has any thought been given to just doing, you know, a typical two family home? Where they're one on top of each other and one on top of another as opposed to back to back?
There comes a, we have explored that, but there comes a lot of benefits by doing these, you know. Back to back as opposed to on top of each other uh for a number of reasons. One, it makes for separating them with. Utilities and structure a lot easier. It makes them uh it makes it much. Easier to also help prevent sound mitigation uh between the two units. There's a minimum of code requirement that we have to achieve. And it's much more difficult to do when the units are on top of each other as opposed to sharing a kind of very thick, heavy wall between the two. So just thinking about it pragmatically, especially when living in the space, it's much more comfortable and although it is a duplex. People have their own set of staircases. They have a second floor uh for the bedrooms. You know, they have multiple floors. And it feels more like a home as opposed to like you get a whole floor as an apartment. So from from comfort and from kind of constructability, that's why, you know, we've been presenting to the board these types of projects. Um you know, before and also currently with this one.
Okay, thank you.
I've communicated with the applicant and to address Ms. Harris's uh concern, the applicant would be willing to move the garbage to a separate area in the grass. Area if it pleases the board.
Mister Caulfield, do you have any questions?
Yes, Chair, just uh one or two. Um. The impervious area, um the existing right now is completely all soil, right, grass? This is gonna be more. Asphalt than ever. Uh currently, actually, most of the the lot are currently used for some parking and it's mostly gravel.
Okay, so now we're going from gravel to asphalt. Where is uh water gonna come from when it hits this um parking lot? Is it coming down the driveway, down to the street? What's the elevation pitch?
It's a great question. Um we, uh Mister Caulfield, we do have retained a. Uh David Fantina, an engineer who we've worked on the past. Um he is retained. Uh he will be doing a stormwater management plan. And he will be making sure that um there is stormwater management and dry wells for each of the properties and for mitigating that storm wa- runner. Runoff both at the driveway and also for the houses.
Okay, um okay, um I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Good, um I have a couple of questions. Um. I guess the the first is, you're providing, um I think it's. Six and a half feet to the property line on the south side. Of of a landscaped area, grass area. And that's what's driving the twenty-four foot aisle width and then the parking spaces being a foot and a half from the parking lot. Why don't you move that lawn area so, you know, probably can't get the full. Well, actually, you can get the full four feet. If you move that to four feet and then have the parking spaces keep. A four foot distance, why, why? More on one side and so the parking spaces are right up against, you know, or a foot and a half away from the park.
It's a good question, uh uh Miss Harrison. The. Because of the fact that the parking stalls have cannot intersect with the driveway access. So if I were to flip it, I would still have to move the eighteen foot space so that the full eighteen foot is clear. Past the line of where you enter towards the back from the driveway. So whether I flip it one way or the other, we're still gonna be stuck with a less than four foot on one side or the other.
So, um, okay, so you have. The back end of the the eighteen feet lines up with the ed- edge of the.
Yeah, so you can see where that that curb next to that eleven foot dimension is in line with that eighteen feet. I can't, you know, just. Per building, I can't have that eighteen foot encroach.
I I understand.
Into that line. So I I I did draw it both ways. So the this way works a little bit better because it also gives us that. Uh you know, it just works better this way.
Mister Lasota, can't you angle the driveway when once you get behind the the building to to. So at an angle you can gain a a foot or two feet?
Well, that goes back to the other chair. I I forget, I I forget who asked the question of the board, but you know, then it goes into an issue of. Not giving enough space once you go down that staircase at the rear. You know, I don't want to create, i- i- if we were to design an angle, once we hit past the homes. One of the houses are going to step down and have maybe not even adequate space uh. For to safely go down that staircase and then make that turnaround and go onto the sidewalk ways.
I mean, you could simply, you know, redesign that building so it's like you flip it to the other side.
But uh but then going back to that point, if we were to flip the entry to the other side, architecturally on the inside, it would it would create. That living room space, it would be unusable because you'd be walking in on one end and then the staircase would be on the other side. And thus furnishing that space would be not practical.
Wouldn't you be able to flip the entire bill, you know, the entire building, you know, or not just the staircase, but the just flip the interior? So instead of having it on the left hand side, you have the staircase on the right hand side.
I mean, that we could potentially do that. I mean, I I I can't say yes or no definitively uh on such a question like that because that does require a lot of. Kind of architectural exploration.
I'm just saying would be probably, you could you could mi- minimize the variance for the setback for the parking area.
It it yeah, honestly, Janice, it would be something I would have to explore. I don't think I can actually say one way or the other.
For this for this type of structure to work, all the stairs and vertical communication always almost always have to be. On one side and back into a number of earlier um. Projects, we had asked that the entry stair be put on the side away from the driveway. The entry stair on the street be on the side away from the driveway, which sort of forces the stairs to be on that side.
But with with the porch, the the stairs can go anywhere.
Yeah.
They could keep the stair exactly where it is and just flip the whole floor plan or just flip the floor plan on the backside of the house.
I I'll leave it to the architect. I don't believe it would work that way, up and down the building. Top to bottom, I don't think it will work that way.
I know, Mister Flager is right. It it would change the character of the home on the exterior and on the interior. It would. I can't, no, I can't, I simply said, no, I can't, it it won't work. I'm looking, I'm looking at the drawings and I'm looking at the different ones on my other screen here and no, Mister Flager's correct.
Building that's on the right, which is, what's the building on the right? What's that address? Fifteen Wheeler Street. And that, you know, putting that building on the left, you know, ma- matching that building to the, in terms of the location of the stairs. To the building on the on the right hands, on the left hand side. So they would be the interior, from the interior perspective, they would be the same, but you would just relocate the entry stairs. On on the front. If you can do it for the building on the right, why can't you do it for the building on the left?
No, I I did, I never said we could do it up to one building on the left or the right. And we can't flip it on either.
I I I think what I'm saying is if you need. You need that three feet. I I again, this is so this is your basis for that three, for that that variance to have the parking, what? One foot from the park from the property line.
The one and a half feet, correct?
Can you have the stairs instead of going in at the rear entrance, instead of running alongside the building? Can you have them extend out towards the back of the?
Otherwise, we we wouldn't be able to ha- accommodate the four parking spaces.
Well, um if you can, if you relocate the trash or the A- AC units, you've got space. They don't have to be in that exact location. You got air air, just saying it.
We can put maybe, we can potentially put all the AC units and all the the um trash uh cans in that grass area that I'm showing at the six and a half feet. But then, you know, it's now instead of having some open grass area, we we just have more concrete and more.
Think that there's what you, it doesn't necessarily all have to go there. I'm just saying that you. You you with some simple redesign of the rear of that building. You can put an angle to the driveway there and move the all four parking spaces a little bit farther from the property line.
Professionally, Janice, I I don't agree with you. It's I don't think it's that simple.
And I don't, I okay, I just don't.
Professionally, I don't, I don't think it's gonna work that way. And it makes going in and out of the parking area even more difficult if we angle it too. It's already a, it's a somewhat narrowed driveway.
People can only drive in straight lines?
Janice, I I understand, but it just for how tight the space is and for how narrow the driveway is. It's best that you enter and exit it as straight as possible. And just looking at the safety of the both the structures and the people and and their cars and their property. Any kind of angle, so uh by making an angle at the back and as someone is leaving, it lends themselves to. Clip the corner of one of the buildings, whether you angle it one way or the other.
I know. Okay, don't agree with that either. How are you, what how what are you doing between the parking area? Is that cur- is the carpet area, the edge of the parking area is gonna be curved? Right? You're installing curbing.
Yes, yes.
What are you putting between the curb and the fence at the end of the parking lot? That one that one and a half foot area.
There we propose grass. We wouldn't propose anything.
How are you gonna maintain a foot and a half of grass?
Yeah, with the. Deal with tight areas all the time.
With a lawnmower, okay.
I mean, I think weed whackers would work there too, just along that whole edge. You wouldn't be able to fit a lawnmower there. You know, not, and this is a similar condition that we have shown on other projects too and, you know, I. Maintenance was never a kind of a c- concern.
It's my concern. You know, other areas where we've had something as narrow as this be, rather than putting grass, which is difficult to maintain. We've had uh stone areas, stone put in. I just think it's, you know, a foot and a half is. Of of grass is just difficult and it really doesn't achieve anything.
Yeah, just I just as an architect, in my professional opinion, this is the, this is the best layout of from a number of dif- for a number of different reasons.
Okay.
I just, and my understanding is these plans conform to the um four conditions that were imposed by the historic. Recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, Mister Chairman.
Okay, and then just wanted to to go back to the foot. Foot and a half strip, I'm not gonna require this, but it may make more sense to, if you put. You know, lily turf or something like that in that truly requires no maintenance um. And stays green the whole year and only grows, you know, six inches high might be a better solution there and. And, you know, having something that, whether you're doing a weed whacker or whatever, um um that's just a suggestion. I think there's some. You know, low growing perennials like that, that, you know, I have them lining my front walk and it. You know, basically covers a foot and a half wide area and doesn't in- impact the parking and doesn't really require any maintenance. Pulling off some dead leaves in the spring, that's about it.
Oh yeah, Mister Chairman, it's a great suggestion. I think, you know, make that a condition. Well, I think we'd be happy to.
Leaving that to you. I'm not going.
No, that it's a great, I, we definitely will uh consider that and potentially put that in there instead of grass. I think it's a great idea.
Um, okay, um, any other questions from members of the board? Okay, um. Okay, are there any members of the audience who have questions or comments on the application? We will unmute everybody who I don't think there's anyone who exists, but on the odd chance that. Somehow someone's connecting and not showing up on my screen, um we'll unmute everybody and if you have. Anything to say about the applications or any questions on the application, this is your one and only opportunity and speak up quickly.
There are no attendees. Everyone is is a panelist, so they can unmute themselves.
Or smart went to bed, huh? Okay, um. Mister Vettery, do you have anything you want to add before we discuss and vote on the application?
No, Mister Chairman.
Okay, um we'll start discussion with Mister Moore. So far, I think that the uh, it's like a good project. Um, no additional comments. Mister Simon?
Um I'd be in favor. Uh these these properties are tight and is limited in what you could do and I think uh. This design is is a is a best effort, so I would be in favor.
Mister Harris?
She's still muted.
Sorry about that. Um I was saying, I'm I'm generally in favor of um this application. Um I think the applicant should move the trash areas um away from the uh property lines um to the back area. Um and I do believe that there is a way to um to eliminate the variance for the uh parking. Um setback. To eliminate the variance for the uh parking um setback. Um, on the south side of the property line, um, and I would encourage the um the applicant and her architect to uh. To explore that, um, but I'm I'm in favor of the other variances requested.
Mr. Caulfield?
I'm in favor, Chair.
Mr. Fleischer?
I'm also in favor of the application, I think it's consistent with a number of other applications, actually from the same developer. In the same uh portion of town and I think um. It's, it's, uh, I guess it's just basically consistent with just about every one of the others that we've approved, so I'm in favor of this one as well.
Okay, Mr. McCullough?
Mr. McCullough uh has left the meeting.
Okay, Janice, I guess I have a question before I start as to. So it's your opinion that the current location of the trash enclosures does not require a variance?
Right, well, cause these are one, these are basically two family houses and two family houses are not required to provide trash enclosures.
So what, what he's showing does not constitute a trash enclosure and hence is not subject to the setback requirement, is that?
That's, I'm approaching this as, since it's not a requirement for them to provide it, essentially, they're just putting a fence, which they are allowed to. Put on the property line, they're using that fence and just use uh using it to um. Uh delineate where they're storing their trash, so it's really not, doesn't constitute a accessory structure. Like a trash enclosure would for other types of uses. And it doesn't have a roof, doesn't have a, we dr- tra- trash enclosures generally, we require them to have a roof, this doesn't have one.
Okay, um, so I've, um, I'm in favor of the application, I think, um, given. The narrowness of the lots, um, you know, justifies uh the various variances that have been requested. Um, the, you know, the character of the neighborhood is homes similar to these, it's one. Lot, they're replacing a very comparable home that they were authorized to demolish, I, you know, I, I think. This is, you know, providing some off-street parking, um. You know, so I think, you know, that overall this is providing a great benefit and is certainly not gonna result in a. Substantial detriment to the public good or subsan- substantial impairment to the zone plan, um, you know, I think in terms of. You know, we, just to be clear, we are not approving a variance for the um setback for the air conditioning units. That the applicant provide gross easement for the driveway and parking area to the uh board's attorney for review. Um, that they pr- that they consult with the township arborists to plant the. Two street trees as um proposed in front of one for each of the houses. And that they, when they do their stormwater plan, it be provided to the board's engineer for approval. Um, any further discussion? If not, someone want to make a motion?
Move approval of the application with the conditions as stated by the Chair.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, can we go variance by variance, I'm sorry?
Can can we, we can, but I think we can probably group some, uh, which which ones are you concerned with?
Um, the variance for the uh the parking lot setback.
Okay, uh, uh, you have any issue with the the other variances?
No.
I just closed my things, so, so, okay, so the initial vote is, why don't we do that one first? Is for the variance from. Montclair Code, section three forty seven dash one oh four, requiring uh parking area be set back four feet from the pro- um property line. I. Someone moved that, I I don't.
Move approval of the variance to the uh reduced setback.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, Janice, you wanna call the roll on that?
I can call a roll, this is Tommy.
Okay, Tom, whoever.
All right, McCullough?
He's gone.
He's gone, uh, Moore? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Mr. Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
And then someone needs to make a motion for the other variances and include all the conditions that I previously stated.
Move approval of the uh remaining variances with the conditions as stated by the Chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Okay, go build nice houses, before we adjourn, I need to say two things. Thing one is, this is Mr. Fleischer's last meeting because somehow or other he thinks he can get off the board, which. I do think I am able to do, I, you know, Mr. Fleischer has served on the board for decades. And has been a great asset to the board, to me personally, and to the township for his contribution and. We will sorely miss him and he's just been great and even though when he first joined the board, he. We were starting an application that um he had to recuse himself. Took twenty hearings and ultimately, they asked the US Supreme Court, the objectors for Sertiari, the our decision was upheld, but. He did get to skip out for about a year after he was appointed, but since then, he has been invaluable to the board. And serving as vice chair and chair when I've had to recuse myself and. But you've been great, Joe, and the town will really miss your service on this board and we will miss you and I personally will miss you.
Uh, let me just, let me just say thank you and and particularly to my two partners throughout that entire time. Which is Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Harrison, um, you guys have both been extraordinary, I I wanna thank all my colleagues. Cause this sometimes isn't fun and it sometimes lasts till midnight, as this one's about to do. But I wanted to say thank you to all of you, our obligation here is actually an enormous task. For which we get paid so much money and um. And I and I and I thank all of you who volunteer your time for this effort, it's really great. I I would I would add one more thing with regard to Mr. Harrison, he was here be for me, my guess is he'll be here for a long time. After me, and anytime I disagreed with him, the question I would come home and ask myself was. What am I not seeing that he is? I never, I almost always felt that when there was a disagreement, that I was probably in the wrong, even though I voted the other way, so. To that, I apologize to him on those rare occasions, but it's been a pleasure working with him and beside him for all these years. So, thank you all.
And Joe, I will miss you very much also, your attention to detail, your insight was tremendous and uh good luck with everything.
Thank you.
And and my second thing is I wish everyone happy holidays and stay safe and. We'll see you all in January and just have a great few weeks off and we're back. With the full agendas in January and seemingly February.
Happy holidays all. Thank you. Marching to a church.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the best, Joe Fleischer.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Night.